Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Calmazoo City Commission to order for Monday, July 24th, 2017. Clerk Borland, please call the role.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Knott.
Here.
Commissioner Millsar.
Present.
Commissioner Sykes. Commissioner Irvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Hopewell.
Present. Communications Manager Ritzman.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, we are now at discussion items. Starting with.
Yeah. I will kick it off and then we can go from there. Well, tonight's a big night for Calmazoo. We are presenting the basis for the creation of the Foundation for Excellence. The documents that will, will set forth the function and, and form of the, of the foundation. And again, this is a public-private partnership that really is meant to live in perpetuity. So, this truly is a historic evening in discussing this. The partnership represents a new model that will reduce the city's property tax rate, making it more competitive with its neighbors and across the state. And also making it more attractive for businesses and jobs to come to Calmazoo. And also provide much-needed tax relief to our residents. It also stabilizes the city, city's budget. The city's budget is unstable from the broken municipal finance model in the state of Michigan. So, this helps, stabilizes us regardless of what happens around us or, or through the state. And allows this work to continue, again, in perpetuity. It also provides new funding for aspirational investments aligned with Imagine Calmazoo 2025. And will make our city an excellent place to live, work, and play for everyone. The core principles of this model are that it's built on trust. It's also built on the rich legacy we have of philanthropy in this, in this community. Everyone can be a philanthropist and give back to the community. In fact, to date, we've had about $15,000 donated back to the Foundation for Excellence by our residents. Investments in our community are, will be those as envisioned by our citizens through Imagine Calmazoo. So, it's really driven by that, by our citizens and, and not what staff thinks or, or other organizations. It's truly a citizen-led initiative. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to City Attorney Clyde Robinson, who will actually walk us through the, the documents. I'm sorry, I gotta talk about outputs for the meeting first. So, tonight, we'd like to leave here with a shared understanding of the legal documents that are, that will be incorporating the Calmazoo Foundation for Excellence. We also would like consideration given to approve a resolution to incorporate the Foundation for Excellence on August 7th, the next regular city commission meeting. And then confirm next steps and timeline for the FFE incorporation. So with that, I'll turn it over to City Attorney Robinson.
Evening, Mr. Attorney.
Good evening. What you have before you and what is available out in the hallway and is also now available on the city website are the, are the three, what I'll call, key documents. First off, I apologize, there was, we tried to get them available as of Thursday of last week, but when you've got two attorneys going over word by word, comma by comma, sometimes you find things in there that you'd say, well, how did that creep into this version of it? And so, over the weekend, Mr. Toms, who represents the lead donors and myself, were trading comments about the documents and they were, the ball was in his court this afternoon and he finished them late this afternoon and then I walked over to his office and took possession of them and brought them back to the city hall. So, again, it's been a, a process that it was, nobody was particularly dragging their feet. It just sometimes takes a while to get documents of this nature, of this complex. And I didn't want to give you something that was, oh, this is, even though it says draft here, this is, I don't envision any changes at all. If there are, there's not, they will not be substantive. There will be maybe a, a word here or there that if we find another gremlin that's crept into the documents. But I did now want to give you some things that, oh, we're still working on it. I wanted you and more importantly perhaps the public to have the documents so they can review them over the next two weeks so that when we reassemble on August 7th, everybody's got a firm grasp of what it is that we're doing. So with that, I'll go over the, the, the documents and I'll just briefly, there are three of them. And I, I guess I would draw an analogy to what each of them attempt to do. The first one is the Articles of Incorporation. By analogy, this is like our city charter or our state constitution. It is intended to be a relatively short document. It kind of sets things up, it creates the framework for the organization. This is the document that will be filed with the state of Michigan and with, with the appropriate filing fee. Apparently, once this is approved by you on the 7th, it can be filed electronically and we can get a response back to the, from the state the very same day. And we would then be, the corporation, the nonprofit corporation, Calmazoo Foundation for Excellence, will be officially established. So, that's what the first document is, it sets the framework. The next document are the bylaws. And this kind of puts the flesh on the bones. This is a little more detailed, there's more pages to it. There, you'll notice if you read through them, there is some language that appear to be the same and that was done by design so that the two documents are consistent. Again, that's part of what we were working on this, this, over the weekend is making sure that the two documents, the same wording was in various, in both documents. So they mirrored one another so that there was not confusion. Oh, he said this here, but he said this here. Which one is the controlling language? What was the intent? So it was to make sure that there was clarity in both the documents and they dovetailed with one another. The final document is a, is a document that's, that is referenced, and this is, I am showing it to you because this is the first time you've probably seen it. This is one of the documents that are referenced in the bylaws, the Articles of Incorporation. In addition to the memorandum of understanding that this body approved last October, this is also a document that will set forth and be one of the, I guess, the founding pillars of the Foundation for Excellence. And this is a statement of donor intent that has been drafted basically by the lead donors so as to, again, identify what is the intent of creating this organization. And then there's a signature acknowledgement for the city to, representatives to go along with this. So this is, basically reflects right from the beginning that this is a joint effort when the city manager and the mayor approached the lead donors, Mr. Johnston and Mr. Parfett, about, this is the problem. We understand that the Blue Ribbon Committee had some issues or had some suggestions that are, are not going to be carried through, in particular the income tax. I'm reluctant to mention that. But that was one of the options that was on the table and there was, the, the leadership was told that that was not a very palatable option. Well, we, I think that, I don't want to say the challenge was laid down, but if we can't use that, or if that's going to be opposed significantly, what are some of the other things that we might attempt to deal with the issues that we as a community are facing in terms of our revenue? And this was, this philanthropic approach was a suggestion. And we've heard from the lead donors that this has generated, or this idea has generated a lot of attention. There are people who don't live in this community who apparently are curious about how this might work, that this might be, set a new model. And they are curious to see how this is going to work. They're also willing to throw some money at this even though these, some of these benefactors don't live in this community. And I'm led to believe maybe not even the state of Michigan. But they're looking at this as maybe a different way to look how local government can, again, through its citizen-driven process lift itself out of some of the straitjacket that at least in the state of Michigan was imposed upon us. So with that general overview, I'll try to step through the, the documents a little bit more in detail. As I indicated, this, this is being undertaken by the specific authority granted by the Home Rule Cities Act. So, that's the, the mechanism that we're using to create this nonprofit corporation. There's specific statutory authority for doing so. And the, as was mentioned early on, the, the model is this organization solely exists to support the city of Calmazoo and its operations and programs. It, it will have no other need or no other organization that it seeks to benefit or do work on behalf of. So it's, it's pretty clear that there is this symbiotic relationship between the city itself, the foundation, and the citizens who contribute to the foundation. Part of the reason for this creation, and again, this is referenced, there, what intrigued the donors in particular was the leadership that is shown by this commission and its administration in creating five priorities that were agreed upon in 2014. They've continued to be, at least for the present, the five priorities that drive the work that, by the city manager as authorized by the city commission. And so, that was important for, from the donor's perspective, that there's an organizational structure, that there's a goal, that there is a, a thought process going in. It's not, we don't have our hand out, in other words. We're proactively working on problems and setting forth plans, putting plans in place to address the issues that were confronting the city. That also rolled into the Imagine Calmazoo 2025 process. Again, a visioning process that was more than just updating the master plan. That is a pretty, although that's a, a large task, relatively easily done and very narrow-focused. Credit must be given to now Assistant City Manager Lamb and her subsequent leader at the Department of Planning, Community and Development, Rebecca Kick, for really taking the IK 2025 process and making it more than just amending the master plan. Again, that was intriguing to the lead donors and they're, these priorities and the strategic vision are referenced throughout the documents and form one of the bases for going forward and give, giving this organization its structure. I'll, I won't repeat this, but again, this is what the manager said just a few minutes ago. This is what initially, what this organization, the foundation's attempting to do is to give the city the, the ability to carry out these, use, the use of funds for these purposes. Now, that can change obviously and there's the ability to do that, but primarily, this is really what it's aimed for in perpetuity. So it's to maintain a low millage rate, to address the, the inherent problem with the revenue model that affects municipalities across the state. And then the additional money, the aspirational project piece that can give flower to the Imagine Calmazoo 2025 vision. So, how are we going to set up, I think this is probably what a lot of folks are interested in is, well, who's going to sit on this board? How are they going to be selected? The board, as the manager indicated, is going to be citizen-driven. It is going to be a 13-person board, five of whom are, are going to be nominated, if you will, by the city commission. As ex-official, because they occupy the position, mayor and, and city manager, those two officers will be members of the board. As well as two city commissioners. That'll again, you, it'll be your process to determine who those two other city commissioners are. It's, it's up, it's up to the commission to decide. There's, nothing's been set in stone yet as to how those individuals, those two other individuals will be chosen. So, it's up for the commission to decide who wants, how, how those two other appointees will be granted a position on the foundation board. Then the last city nominee will be a citizen-at-large. The only requirement is that the person be a registered elector within the city. And that, and that the person cannot be an official or an employee of the city. So they have to be somebody who, basically, John or Jane Citizen, who shows an interest in sitting on this board for up to three years. So that's roughly a third of the board there, those five commissioners, those five members. Then there will be eight other members that'll be drawn from various groups or stakeholders that occupy, that show leadership and provide services to the local community. Now, you don't have to necessarily be a city resident, although a majority of the board must be city residents. So at least seven must be city residents. The other folks can be people who have a business in the, in the community, who are a manager or an employee of that business, but don't necessarily, and when I say business, I mean nonprofits as well, who play a role in living or working in the city of Calmazoo. Those groups are identified. And so, what will happen is that some, and that's, it's again, reflected in these documents as to kind of an idea as to who these may be. For instance, education, it's pretty clear, public schools, Western, K College, KVCC, and Devonport come to mind immediately. There may be also the ability for charter schools to be represented. So again, it's very broad-based. Healthcare, obviously the hospitals come to mind, but the EMS, life care can be a, a member or at least of a group. What will happen is, as these groups are identified, they will be convened by the Calmazoo Community Foundation. And then that, the members of that sector, that stakeholder group will nominate one of their own through the foundation that will be presented to the city commission. You'll have the ability to, if you will formally nominate that individual, yes or no? You can, you feel free to reject them if you don't think that individual is a good fit. And you will nominate that to the foundation board because it's a directorship board and they in turn will elect their own members through the nominees that the city commission provides them. So again, it's a symbiotic relationship between citizens who are interested, who are nominated by this body, the city commission, but who ultimately by the foundation board are elected for, that will have a staggered three-year terms. So the, the first class will be a, a group of people for one year, the next two, and then three, and then after that, people will get a three-year term. And they are, they will be term limited to two terms. With the exception that if you get one of those partial terms, either initially or somebody leaves town or has to step off for a variety of reasons and, and they're replaced, that individual gets the partial plus two full terms if they wish to. So, ultimately, I, I guess theoretically it's possible for someone to have a, a term of a little more than eight years, but in most cases it won't be more than six.
Mr. Attorney, since there is not a foundation board for the first appointees, how does that work?
The, what will happen is, once the organization is incorporated, the initial incorporators, the mayor and the city manager, are the initial board. And they will then, so they are the initial board, they're, they're able to take the actions necessary. I doubt that there will be initially, but then within 60 days, the nomination process should be complete. Hopefully, we'll have 13 names at the end of 60 days. That would take us to roughly early October if everything goes as we anticipate. And then, the initial incorporators will name those 13 individuals. But again, the city commission will be nominating those individuals for the, because, to the first board. And then that will create the first 13-member board. So you have to have somebody who can act in that initial period before these members are designated or, or elected. And that's the, the initial board's a two-person board of the mayor and the city manager. Again, this is a graphic kind of showing a little bit of, of where all the, the sectors are. Language has been built in here so that if, and again, because this is intended to be an organization that exists in perpetuity, if circumstances change, and there's, for instance, I, I, and I don't want to necessarily pick on any particular group, but if that group feels that they're not contributing or that their need is, is no longer really present, but there's some other group that has been created that we think should have a voice, there's some freedom if the board suggested to the city commission, for the city commission to say, okay, we're going to remove this particular stakeholder group and replace it with this one. You can't change the number, 13 is, you're stuck at unless you amend the Articles of Incorporation. And that requires unanimity on the part of the board, approval of the city commission, as well as approval of a division of the Michigan Attorney General's Office. I mean, it's not impossible, but it is a, purposefully, a arduous process to amend the Articles of Incorporation. The ability to swap out shareholder groups however, is, the language has been put in here so that is a little easier. You don't have to amend the Articles of Incorporation to do that. We wanted this to be somewhat fluid, at the same time, you, you want to maintain that balance between a, a system that's going to remain in place for perpetuity, but yet have some flexibility to change should circumstances dictate. The, and one of the roles that, and has been written into this document is the role for the Calmazoo Community Foundation to play. They are, as I indicated a few minutes ago, they are the convener. They aren't picking the people, they're convening the stakeholder groups to pick their own nominee and then the foundation will communicate that to the city commission. There is the possibility of having the, the community foundation do some of the back-office type of work that the, the Calmazoo Foundation for Excellence will need to have done. Writing thank you notes to donors, making sure that the correct filings are filed with the IRS. They do that on a, on an everyday basis. We would, as the city, would have to create a whole new administrative staff in order to do that and learn a whole new set of skills, something that we don't regularly do. It makes sense for a fee for a foundation, like the community foundation, to take that work on for us because as I said, they're experienced in it. And again, we can, should be able to realize some of the economies of scale that would exist because they're doing it all the time. Again, this goes, kind of again, repeats what I said just a few minutes ago in terms of the role for the city commission, that you are basically nominating all 13 members. You get to choose five of them yourself and you have a yes or no vote on the other eight. And then that goes to the, the board for their election. So you're making that nomination, if you will, or recommendation for those individuals to, to sit on the board. And again, under the bylaws, you will designate who gets, who's going to have the first one-year terms, who's going to get a two-year, who's going to get a three-year. In terms of the, the nine, the eight plus the one city resident-at-large. The other ones are set, as long as Mr. Ritzman and Mr. Hopewell are the mayor and manager, they will continue to occupy a, a role because they're ex-officio. The other, the city commission members, you pick those, you can, they will be there for as long as their term exists. And then if they're, either choose not to run or they're voted out of office, then you have to replace that individual. So, that's the way that would work. So you're basically, you're going to have nine people, you're going to say the, three people class of one year, three people class of three, and three people for class of three years. Again, this is in, in a graphic details to how the nomination process works. This should track with what I just said. If, if it doesn't, I apologize because this is the way it's, it's intended to, to work. And again, this is reflected in the articles and in the bylaws. Again, it's been mentioned, where's the money go, what is it intended to do? This is what we've been challenged in terms of attempting to deal with. As you know, this, we have an initial gift of $70.3 million that will get us through 2017, 18, 19, 2020 is, is when we, we hope to have this foundation corpus fully funded and then it can start providing the, the same type of revenue that we're going to be using, we've already begun to use over the next, over this year and the next two following. As you've said, you've already seen that in real, in real terms in that this body has approved several agreements to provide for aspirational capital improvement projects. The tax bills went out this, just a few weeks, a couple of weeks ago, that indicated to everybody who got a tax bill what their savings were over last year. And so, we're already seeing the fruits of that $70 million gift. The idea of this foundation is to continue that work. I've kind of went over the board construction and composition. They will have a, basically three meetings, they can have more, but at least three meetings a year. They have an annual meeting in the spring, I, I believe it's in March or April. And then they meet twice in the fall in September and October. The September and October meetings are important because that is when the city representatives will go to the, the board and say, here's what we're looking at for the next budget year in terms of what we need to make sure that we continue to have a 12 mil tax rate. Here's what we need to cover the shortfall in, of revenue. And here's what we're looking for in terms of aspirational projects. Which don't need to be a one-off, they can be a multi-year project. There's, there's nothing that precludes that. But you've got, the, the idea is, the city administration makes its case, if you will, to the citizen board that will make those decisions in terms of, yeah. "Yeah, we're going to give you the money, because the statement of intent says, 'We need to keep the millage rate low, we're committed to that, we've committed to overcoming the shortfall in revenue, we're committed to that.' Now, let's talk about the aspirational projects, are the projects consistent with the donors' intent? Imagine Kalamazoo 2025." And so, that's what they're looking at. This is not intended to be a rubber stamp board. On the other hand, it's also a board that hopefully will ask the hard questions, that will hold the city accountable for the way it spends the money, and does, and meets the expectations of the community at large and the donors, and when I say donors, that means all donors, whether big or small, who provide money for this exceedingly exciting project and way of funding local government. So, that's what the role is, and it was impressed upon us by the lead donors. And as I indicated by opening remarks, they indicated that there are people outside of Kalamazoo who are interested in this project, who are willing to commit funds toward it. But, they were reluctant to do so, if they felt that this community foundation board was merely a rubber stamp. That would do two things. If that's all it did, it would, you would not get very, the idea was, you would not get people who would be particularly interested in the board, because if that's all I'm going to do is show up for three meetings, and I have to say yes, or that's all my role is, I don't do any critical thinking, why would I want to be a member of that board if I'm not going to be actively engaged? And that's reasonable perspective. The other is, again, if it's just going to be a rubber stamp, and there is no accountability, why would I throw good money after bad? I mean, that's not, I'm not saying that, that's, that's the way I characterized some of the remarks that were directed toward us, in terms of, we really want this board to be somewhat dynamic, we want it to work with the city, understanding it is supportive of the city, but at the same time, put people on there who understand the concept and are willing to ask the hard questions, if you will. And to that end, I don't know that that is, necessarily should be a scary thought, because the city manager, Ritzma, and his staff come to you every December 1st with a budget that you guys vet, that you ultimately approve, and he's required to answer the hard questions that you and citizens raise. So, it's, it's not a different concept, quite frankly. It's just a different group of people asking those same questions about a subgroup or subsegment of the city budget. And so, in that regard, I don't know that it is a very scary concept at all. Again, we, as I indicated a few minutes ago, we're exploring the opportunity to partner with the Kalamazoo Community Foundation to do some of the back-office work. As I said, they do this kind of work regularly, all the time, and hopefully, for a, for, for a fee. I don't think that we should expect them to, to provide these services at no cost. But, hopefully, for a reasonable cost, they can do these, do this work for us, and ultimately, save the foundation, the less money the foundation spends for this type of administrative work, the more money it has for funding the aspirational projects. So, this is what you're going to be confronted with, and I don't mean that in a, in a negative sense. This is what's going to be proposed to you in two weeks' time. Ultimately, there will be some whereas clauses reflecting the journey that we have undertaken from the inception of, basically, starting before the MOU is approved, through the approval of the MOU, and then the work that's occurred since October through tonight. And that is, providing a, the documents that will, if you will, create the framework and put the flesh on the bones of that framework. And going forward, we can say the foundation has officially been, been birthed, if you will. And that is what we're intending to do on August 7th. A resolution will come before you, seeking to authorize pursuant to the Home Rule Cities Act, the city manager and the mayor as the initial incorporators, to sign all documents necessary to file with the state and officially, I'm going to say, give birth to this, this infant, with this idea that's in its infancy of, of, and a different way of approaching municipal finance. As well, because it's a corporation, you have to have a resident agent, makes sense for the attorney to do that, so that's, that'll be my role. That basically means, if people want to send notices to the foundation, it comes to my office. And that, after those initial incorporators, and they're the ones that will adopt the bylaws, either that, or it will be the first 13-member board who will confirm that. And, and so, that is what is expected. I think that it is anticipated, or at least hoped, that Mr. Johnson and Mr. Parfatt might be present at that meeting. The idea is to, hopefully, I think, sign that document as soon as you, if you, if you act affirmatively on it at that meeting, and then we can file it the following morning with the state of Michigan. And as I said, it can be filed electronically. I'm told it's maybe a three- or four-hour turnaround. So, if we can file that as soon as the state's willing to take our paperwork electronically, we, by noon the following day, the, the foundation may be established. But certainly, by the end of business on the following Tuesday, it's anticipated that the foundation will be officially birthed, if you will, to carry the analogy one step further. Well, that, I'll turn it, if there's any questions, I'll answer them. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to City Manager Ritzma.
Why don't you stay there, Mr. Manager, you have some final statements?
Yeah.
And then we'll go into questions.
I just want to summarize the next steps, and even beyond the formation, if approved. So, August 7th will be a very important day, where the commission will consider the, creating the Foundation for Excellence. As City Attorney Robinson mentioned, the filing of the documents would follow shortly thereafter. And then, throughout the fall, the board would be assembled, as laid out, with the goal of it being created and established by, the full board, by the first quarter of next year. So, for the 2018 budget development that we will be, and are working on, will be presented integrating the Foundation for Excellence category, funding categories, and we'll make that very clear in the budget presentations we make. And then, we would go from there with the full board thereafter.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioners, why don't we do questions? And I'm going to go by commissioners, so that we're not having, bouncing back. And then, if there's follow-up questions, and then have discussions. Since we're not voting on anything, there's no motion, but if we can do questions first, that might help it flow easily. So, Commissioner Millsar, you're looking at me, so I'll go with you.
I was just looking at you to see if I was, if we were following the normal bottom-up order. Well, thank you. A few questions. One, just wanted to clarify the definition of a registered elector. That would be a registered voter in the city of Kalamazoo?
That's correct. You have to be registered with the, a city of, yes, I suppose, I think, city of Kalam, I think it's worded, so that's the intention, yes, you have to be a registered elector of the city of Kalamazoo.
Okay.
Again, if that needs clarification, that can be certainly made.
Okay, thank you on that.
Yes, it is, the city director shall be a registered elector of the city of Kalamazoo.
Okay.
That's on page eight of the Articles of incorporation.
Thank you. And bear with me as I file through on my notes. And this is a point for questions, for Clyde, not general discussion.
Yeah, questions now, and then discussion later. And if you're referring to the documents, refer to the page number, if you would, in the article or item.
Okay, this would be the final page on the bylaws section. I'm sorry, almost the last page. I'm dealing with two different drafts here, so my apologies. Okay, this would be section 9.05, paragraph C. It notes, "Consistent with donor intent as specified in the statement of donor intent." Is that referring specifically to the statement of donor intent we have before us exclusively, or could that be future statements of donor intent?
This is intended to, the donor intent statement is entitled, is intended to be the document that's referenced there, because it is capitalized, it's not referring to other, if it was in lowercase, you might come to that conclusion, but it is referring to that specific document, which will be, as I said, one of the cornerstones of the foundation's creation.
Okay, so, not referring to potential future donor intent statements? And then, well, let's see. The foundation board you noted is nominated by the city commission ultimately, but the foundation is the entity that has the true authority to appoint?
To elect.
Or, to elect, thank you. Do they have any legal ability to elect with, in the absence of a nomination from the city commission?
You mean, elect a member on their board?
Correct.
No.
They have zero ability, if, if they are not nominated by the city commission, they have zero ability to elect?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The only, the only people that the board elects among themselves would be the officers of the board, or the officers of the corporation, a president, there's an optional vice president, secretary and treasurer.
I believe that is all I have on questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Irvin?
Thank you, Mayor Hopwell. I have some question about the process of nominating the, the community stakeholders. The recommendation for the nominations will come from the stakeholder groups that are convened by the community foundation.
That's correct.
Then, that, that recommendation comes to the city commission, and it has the ability, according to the bylaws, to accept or reject that nomination. I could, I can see a tendency amongst the commissioners to honor that recommendation pretty, pretty thoroughly. But what if, what if it doesn't? What, what, what if, what happens if the commission rejects that nomination? What do, what do you see as being the fallout from that?
Well, I don't know about the fallout, the, the documents indicate that the stakeholder group that nominated that individual will reconvene and nominate a new individual.
Okay. So, the commission cannot nominate any stakeholder representative itself? It has to, it's basically a pass-through, has a pass-through function?
It's a vetting function, yes.
It, it has veto power, but no power of initiation?
That's correct.
Okay. I have some, there's some implications connected with the minimum distribution that's spoken about in the bylaws, section 9.07. I want to call people's attention to that. Because I want, I want us during the discussion period to, to consider, or to discuss the implications of, of that, in view of what we see the economy, how the economy as a whole behaves, and especially the, the rate of return to be expected from, from investments in the capital market. So, I'll wait for that, but I just want to have people realize that where this 3.5% is spoken of, it's in, it's, it's in the bylaws. And that, I think that's a key thing to be aware of. Also, it looks like what's being committed to is sections A and B of section 9.07. A has to do with funding to replace the, the revenue loss from the millage.
Correct.
Right now, that's about $10 million a year. If the tax base of the city grows, presumably, the, that $10 million could become less, right? It has to come from the foundation. Is that true?
Whatever the difference is, to make up, whatever the number needed to make up the difference, yes. If the tax base grows, I guess, the potential exists for it to be less than $10 million.
Okay, and so, that means, okay, more later. The other thing that's required distribution is $4 million annually to make up for the shortcomings in the municipal, Michigan's municipal finance system, which presumably is replacing revenue sharing. Is that what the?
In large measure, yes.
Okay. So, you have roughly $10 million plus $4 million. $14 million required from the foundation annually, just to keep even with what we are currently seeing as this, the city's require, the city's funding requirements, the city's revenue requirements, to maintain a status quo situation, maintain a status quo situation. Is that true?
Yes, and I want to point that, something out about that. Yes, you're, you're absolutely correct. I guess, this takes, the wording of this takes a somewhat pessimistic view, admittedly. Various administrations, and I'm not casting aspersions on Democrats or Republicans, this goes back to whether you're the Angler, Granholm, Snyder administrations, none of them have been particularly fond of local municipalities. There's been no change at the state in terms of easing the, the, the low, the revenue shortfalls experienced, not by Kalamazoo, but a lot of municipalities across this state. Now, I suppose, if, for some reason, the sun comes up tomorrow, and the state decides to really take this problem on and give relief to the cities, we won't need that $4 million. But at this point, it looks like we're going to need the $4 million, at least for the foreseeable future. The other thing that we did, and this is, again, because the market basket of goods purchased by municipalities is different than what you or I would, in terms of what they call the consumer price index, which is based upon a, a market basket of consumer goods, which municipalities don't buy. We're not buying bread and milk and, and all, you know, I mean, we do buy automobiles, but, you know, we're not, we're not buying the same market basket of goods as, as a home consumer would be. So, fortunately, and I give, credit must go to Mr. Scribola, our finance director, who suggested the American City and County Magazine, who does an annual municipal market basket price index, that's better reflects the goods that municipalities buy. And this was put into this document, so that it really reflects the true cost of government, as opposed to using an index that is foreign to the way we do business.
Good. That's a good point. That's all my questions for now.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin.
Thank you. Two quick questions. First one, what was the thought process, or how did we land on the number seven for residents, as opposed to a supermajority nine, as an example?
Well, it was, I, I don't know if there was any thought really given. We started out with a board, we didn't want a board that was too large nor too small. I think there was the attempt to, because if, if we're going to talk about who should have control, I think, again, the desire was to have the citizens have control. So, I, I can't say that there's a specific decision point where this was made. It basically came out of a discussion that, I think it was back to January, and I'll defer to the mayor and the manager, that we had with the lead donors, and how we came up with what was described on the board as, as bubbles. The, the concept of- The, the concept of, of community stakeholders sitting on, comprising the majority of the board was something that was, uh, under discussion. Uh, this was, goes back to the, the model that, uh, the city manager had envisioned a couple of years ago in terms of what can the city be, the future city can be, that even predated the IK twenty twenty-five, uh, process. And we, we took that, and that got a lot of mileage. That was embraced by the lead donors, and then the mayor did a quick, kind of a PowerPoint, and where he said, this is what I'm really thinking about, and it was embraced. That's how we kind of got to where we were. I can't say there was a specific decision point, say, oh, this is where we're going to slice the, the loaf of bread on this.
Commissioner, if I might, also, it's consistent with most of the other boards that we appoint. We, we pretty much, we have some boards, not that many, that have non-city residents on them, and all of them require that majority, not a super majority, but a majority beyond the, uh, on, on the board. So it's pretty consistent with what we've done, so probably it's in that realm as well.
Second quick question, um, what are the next steps, process or timeline communicating with the community foundation as it relates to management services?
Well, that's ongoing. I would defer that to the city manager, uh, and, uh, assistant manag, city manager Lamb. I think they've been in some conversations, but I don't know the status of those. And ultimately, it will be the foundation board that will have that contract with the foundation of a c- community foundation rather than the, the city per se.
Yeah, the, we've had conversations with them, um, around both of these functions, and I think there's agreement to serve in that role by the community foundation. Now, it's a matter of negotiating a, a fee for the, uh, for the, both of the activities. And then, we didn't want to get too far ahead of the creation of the foundation, but that would be next logical step.
Just also, to answer that, I met with the foundation president on Friday, and they're very excited and want to support in any way they can. I would expect that fee not to be something exorbitant, but, you know, them trying to, probably similar to what they've done when they've managed, uh, things for other, other organizations. But they're really excited to be a part of, of this work. They see it as connected to the work that they do, their mission and vision. Commissioner Sykes?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So, okay, so with this type of board, what, what would you consider to be too many members of the board?
Well, you want a group of, of people who, um, well, initially, we didn't want a small, too small group. If you're looking at the outside, these boards can be, sometimes they're, they're so large that you have to have subcommittees in order to get work done. So we wanted a group of people that was easy to assemble and who could, um, when, when they do get together, they wouldn't have to create a committee to make a decision. They could make a decision on, by themselves. Um, it's, and, you know, and thirteen was, I guess, decided upon as that number kind of near the sweet spot of, you know, at least eleven, no, probably no more than fifteen. So that was kind of, kind of hit the midpoint, in, in order to make it an efficient working board.
Commissioner, if I might also, again, um, and I just want to remind us, we appoint boards, and this, that number's not that inconsistent with what we've done. I think typically eleven, uh, is in our, the realm that we've stayed in. So as I was talking about it or thinking about it, I thought, well, we're familiar with that, it seems reasonable. But let's put a couple more on there beyond that. It's pretty consistent with what we've done.
Awesome. Um, well, and the reason that I ask is because I'm wondering, is there some good reason not to ensure that every neighborhood have representation on this board as opposed to one, uh, person, stake, or director who represents neighborhoods as a whole? And so that's, that's why I posed the question, do you see some reason not to do that, Clyde, or a city manager, or city attorney? I'm sorry.
Uh, there's no legal reason not to do it. Uh, then, then, uh, obviously, when you start doing that, you begin to dilute, if you will, the, the, uh, the citizen, the, the city representatives. That's one thing that can happen. Again, um, but there's, there's, and, and you, as you may notice, there is a, a preference, although it's not a requirement, that, that neighborhood stakeholder represent neighborhoods that, where there is at least fifty-one percent of the household have incomes, at or below eighty percent of the median. Uh, so that is, again, somewhat of a safeguard, to reach out to those folks who don't normally have a voice. Uh, and so that's, that's the goal there.
Awesome. Uh, and then one other question, so the statement of donor intent, this was not in our original documents that we received a week or so ago, right?
No, this, this was, uh, there was some discussion, but it really only came to fruition. Um, we, there's been some talk about it, but it hasn't, had not been finalized until just recently.
Okay, and then is this, is the intention of this to, uh, uh, what am I trying to say? Better explain, uh, the language of donor-directed funds? Is it sort of a move away from the idea of donor-directed funds to donor intent?
I don't know that it was intended that way as much, it was intended to be some guidance. Um, I guess it's, again, to use the analogy that I started out with, and again, it's maybe not the best analogy, but the statement of donor intent is kind of like the Declaration of Independence, if you will. Kind of an idea of, here's the ideas, here are the principles behind this, uh, along with the memorandum of understanding and IK twenty twenty-five. And then that gives, the Articles of incorporation become the constitution, and the bylaws become the statutes. So, uh, I, again, I don't want to take that analogy too far, but that's the kind of, uh, what I'm attempting to draw there. That the donor intent is something that the, as board members come and go, they can go back to the statement of donor intent and say, aha, that's why this was created. It's, it's fully expected that there are people who will sit on this board who probably are in, will be starting first or second grade this fall. And when they get to the point of being leaders, they're going to say, this is a great idea, but, you know, what was the inception? What was the rationale behind this? This document will be there to give them that guidance.
Awesome. Uh, and then, and so this was available this afternoon, along with the final drafts of the other documents?
Yeah, it was finalized, uh, this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sykes, I want one of your kids on there, uh, if they, if they, if they, if they want. Commissioner Ambison?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Clyde, I appreciate that. I have a couple more general questions, and that is this. Even though this particular final draft presumably was just publicly released, uh, a little less than an hour before this meeting, it is the case that commissioners have had a chance to review, uh, previous drafts prior to this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I know that some commissioners spent an extensive amount of time going through these documents, and, uh, not only from a policy perspective, but from a literally grammatical, uh, perspective, and provided input to you based on all that work. And did you incorporate any of that commission work in this document?
Yes. The only document that you didn't see was the statement of donor intent, the other two, uh, earlier versions of that were provided, and yes. Commissioner input was taken into consideration, and some of the suggestions, uh, well, some were just questions, but a lot of the suggestions were found their way into the text. I couldn't enumerate them all, but.
Right. But it has been a collaborative process, to the extent that you've had an opportunity to communicate with commission members
Yes.
to arrive at these documents that we have. A more general question, because in some ways, we are inventing something new here that, uh, uh, to not make too big of a stretch, is not unlike what you referenced earlier with the Declaration of Independence and setting up our own constitution. When you begin to do this work, not necessarily, you know, having a model that exists and says, well, you know, here's where it's happened all across the country. How did you end up with this? And, and I think one could discuss, as you get deep into it, okay, should it be thirteen, or should it be eleven, or should it be seventeen, or should it be this and that? But if you don't mind, just taking a moment to say, how did you take, go from this rather amorphous and kind of a glorious concept and follow the route which ended up in the documents that we have here in front of us? Is there a way you can summarize kind of your, your, your mission thinking and, and, you know, how, how you got here, I guess?
Um, good question, and I would say that, um, and I, I guess, where I would start is, uh, by saying, there's a mural on the back wall of this chamber that indicates various lawgivers through history, and it's not much different than that. Articles of incorporation and bylaws, I've done these for, uh, if you will, uh, the various city bodies. And so it's, that form isn't foreign to me. The idea of taking these amorphous concepts and, I guess, putting them into words, and then pro, providing a process in which it's easily understood and reflects the intent, not only of this body, but the lead donors who are representatives of the donor community, big and small, in terms of their experience in the philanthropic world. And so they brought their thoughts to, uh, the process as well. Something that obviously was a little foreign to me, since it's not an area of the law that I've, uh, practiced. But I know municipal law, at least I think I know it fairly well. So I come from that background, and then it's the, I don't want to say a clash, but it was the dovetailing of those ideas to put something together that would reflect the, uh, intentions that are referenced in the, primarily the memorandum of understanding. That was the launching point, because that was a document that was mutually agreed upon by the city commission and the lead donors in terms of what it is that we wanted to do, uh, going forward. And so it was, it was taking those concepts, and again, like the lawgivers in the past, of taking that and saying, okay, here are some, um, fundamentals, some principles that we will observe, and now let's, we stated the general process or the general principle. All right, how do we put that principle into operation? So in terms of, yeah, we need a board of directors, pretty easy. Who's going to appoint that board of directors? How is it going to be, uh, composed? And how are we going to make sure that there is a balance of interests, uh, in how that, that body is, is put together? What is that body to do? Are we going to give it some real power, if you will, uh, in terms of being able to make this process successful? And one of the, this, and I don't think it is, it is just vanity, uh, by the lead donors. If I heard it once, I probably heard it at least a dozen times. The desire is for this idea to be established in perpetuity. And I don't think it is because Mr. Johnston and Parfett want a legacy that everybody will be able to see. Cause if you read this, unless you look at the memorandum of understanding, you wouldn't know offhand that they were, uh, part and parcel of this. Uh, it's, it's, it's a vision that was, um, agreed upon. I wasn't there at the, it's kind of like, were you there at the beginning? In the beginning, there was Jim Ritzman and Bobby Hopewell and Jim, and William Parfett and William Johnston, who said, there's a better way. Let's find it, and here's some ideas. And they, then, they, they put together, as I said, the memorandum of understanding, they gave us the framework, and then this is what has resulted, as a result of, of that general idea, and this is, as I said, this is the, the structure and the flesh on the bones. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, sure, that helps, and I ha, I have one, uh, kind of a follow-up to that, which is something, a segue from what you just recently mentioned, is that the intent is perpetuity. So the intent is to create a document that is relevant now, and hopefully answers present concerns. But in the structure and the operating of this entity that's being set up, are you imagining, and is this built into this document, that there is a manner in which certain things can be modified, uh, in, in, in whatever way to address whatever the issues might be of that day that we can't even imagine in ten or twenty or fifty years? And just succinctly, can you describe what exists in this document to make it not only structured enough to protect the intent, but malleable enough to continue to be a living document?
Yes, uh, like, again, I, I don't want to go too far with the analogy, but like the US Constitution, it can be amended, and it has been. But the amendment process is not an easy one, and it requires basically both houses to agree by two-thirds, and then, uh, each of the states, three-quarters of the states, to approve the amendment. It's a very difficult thing to do, but it can be done. Similarly, the amendment process for this is built in where there is three, as I indicated earlier, three bodies that have to play a role. To amend the bylaws, three-quarters of the board, a majority of the city commission, and also the approval of a division of the attorney general's office that look over trusts and, and the like, public charities. If you want to amend the Articles of incorporation, it requires unanimity on the part of the board. Again, uh, approval of the city commission, and again, the approval of the attorney general. So there is a process available. The, the one exception to that is, again, trying to build in some flexibility where you don't have to go through that arduous amendment process, is if the stakeholder groups, you want to move them around a little bit, you can do that without that need for that formal amendatory process. And so you can do that. So that, that's the, if you will, the, the relief valve that I've tried to, uh, suggest and build in here, so you have a little flexibility so that you can, uh, be somewhat agile. But on the other hand, the intent here is that we're building a structure that is intended to last for a long time, and we don't want it easily dismantled.
Thank you, Commissioner. Honorable Vice Mayor?
Um, thanks, thanks so much for the presentation. I, I think that there's nothing inconsistent with what you presented tonight than what we've been talking about all along. So it took you a long time to put this together, and I'm going to have to study it a lot more before we vote on it. But for me, it seems like what we've been talking about all along, so I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, Commissioners, I'm not going to take time for questions, because I've been able to sit at the table so much on this, and this is more about you having your opportunities. So with that, I want us to have opportunity to have discussion if you have no more specific questions for the attorney. Then if that's the case, oh, uh, Commissioner Irvin?
Robinson, I have one question, uh, about the, uh, statement of donor intent. Was that also something that would, that would help the IRS, uh, in its ruling on what kind of, uh, uh, subsections of the, uh, founda, uh, uh, charitable foundation code would apply to this?
I, 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 it could be included. I don't think it's going to be the trigger point. I don't think it's going to be something that if, if, if the IRS is, this is going, should be a fairly easy question to answer. If there is, if we're in, if we've wandered into the area where there, it's, it's vague, or it's, and I don't know that the statement of donor intent is going to be the, well, something that breaks the tie. I think it's, the, the way the documents have been drafted, and that there will be a, what is called a ten twenty-three statement that will accompany the application to the Internal Revenue Service, I think that it should be pretty simple. The, the real intent of the, the document is, as I said, to give guidance to board members who are either, uh, young people today, or who probably haven't been born yet, in terms of what was the idea behind this, uh, structure and, and this idea.
Okay, good.
Or the, I, the idea behind the concept, I think.
Uh, one follow-up question then. Uh, are we still planning to have this, uh, foundation function as, uh, was recommended to us by the gentleman who came to speak to us from the, uh, Michigan, um, Foundations Association, remember?
Yes, yes, this is, the, it is, it is structured along his suggestions, yes. And is, is intended to be exactly as he recommended.
Okay, great, thanks.
I would point out, I know you just had these, these final form of the documents, uh, for only about an hour and a half. If there are questions that come up, uh, you know, my, you know where my office is located, you know my phone number and email. So I'm, uh, I can attempt to get answers to commissioners as they come up. Uh, so that when we arrive in two weeks, uh, that, uh, you will have your questions answered, you can vote in with confidence.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. We're going to start with Commissioner Sykes.
Yeah, um, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I've been taking notes, and I've got a few thoughts here, so I'm just going to share them initially to get the ball rolling on conversation. You know, first I will start off and just, uh, um, you know, put my bias out there. I've been really open with all of you, with the donor. I've been really open with all of you, with the donors, with the constituents, that I'm extremely uncomfortable with this new model. So I want to be honest about that. And so likely, my bias will show in my comments and my discussion. Part of that is because, you know, one of the things, City Attorney, I heard you say was, you know, that the city will be held accountable by the donors represented by this board. And to me, you know, we've had a little bit of talk about, you know, the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. Accountability should always be held equally and entirely by every single voter. That's why we have this voting system that we have. And not everybody has the ability to donate to the foundation and therefore be represented by the board of the foundation. So that, on a personal level, brings a great deal of discomfort to me. But to your point, Commissioner Anderson, we have had these documents, I think, even two weeks or so to look over, go through. I have met with you, City Attorney and City Manager, to ask questions. I want to be clear, though, I have not really been able to offer suggestions or input, because I, you know, the fact that I am considering something, not based on what I want to see, but based on what constituents have asked for, means that I can't make suggestions without their input. And I am, you know, we were asked not to share these documents with them, because it was still going through the legal process. But I'm disappointed that it has taken so long to get before the constituents and the voters. I'm disappointed that they just got it tonight. So folks in the room are going to have a hard time figuring out how to ask very specific questions based on the documents we have in front of us. Now, they might be able to respond to some of our comments, but it's going to be very hard for anybody in the audience, anybody at home, to have read through this and have presented us with questions, concerns, comments. Along those lines, I'm just going to put this out there. It's going to be really hard for me to vote for this on the 7th of August, because I do believe that the citizens deserve at least one public meeting where they can, you know, ask questions, get a better understanding, let us know their concerns before we actually take a final vote on something this big for our city. And this is a big thing, whether you see it in a positive light or a negative light. So there's that point. But I am working to get away from this, you know, I don't like it place, to how can we make this better, right? I'm trying to offer solutions to issues that I see. I would love for this to be a citizen-led board. I like, you know, the question about the supermajority. I think that's something we should definitely consider, is making this a supermajority. I know we don't typically do that with our boards. But I do think that this is different, and therefore needs to be handled different. I also wonder if there is not an argument to be made to make sure that all of our neighborhood, all of our neighborhoods are represented on this board. I think that's something we should consider. Additionally, I think we should consider the diversity of this board, not just the stakeholder groups, but just all aspects of diversity, which I know is something we've done in the past, and you've been really good at that, City Manager. So I hope that's something we can incorporate here. And then finally, you know, in wanting to make sure that this is not just a board of industry leaders, and forgive me, I know that's not the appropriate terminology, but I'm not finding the word I'm really looking for here. You know, I think I want more, I don't know, I think I want more. I want something else to incorporate, to make sure, again, folks who can't donate are still heard. I think about my visit to ministry with community and learning about some of the boards and groups that they convene there, and folks, you know, who are not. I mean, I sat down and talked to numerous individuals about city stuff, right? And folks being in that situation aren't, you know, there because they don't have the intelligence to lead. So I mean, you know, maybe it's that, maybe it's convening these meetings there and inviting, you know, choosing a member from one of those boards or groups to also sit on this foundation. These are just ideas, pick them apart, run with them. But that's my, that's my opening to the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anderson.
Are we going in a certain?
I'm just going back.
Going around. Okay, so, general comments, kind of related to that, I guess, the specifics. This is obviously very difficult to predict. But if we began a significant amount of rewriting to this document, I mean, I imagine that that's going to add some time to the approval process. Do we have any sense of what it could mean? It's one thing, I guess, to say, there's a comma here, and there shouldn't be a comma. But if we begin to rewrite significant components of this document, do you have any sense of what that might do to our timeline at all? Educated guess, or?
City Attorney. Mr. Attorney.
Well, it depends on the significance of the suggestions. I think that some ideas might be able to be incorporated relatively easily. Some of the other ones, particularly if you're talking about every neighborhood association getting a representative, I don't remember how many neighborhood associations we have. Not all of them are very active. But that, and now you're talking at least probably doubling the size of the board. Then is that something that you really want to deal with in terms of, would that be a little unwieldy? And if it's, if it takes a significant rewrite, there's two things. You've set an August 31st deadline, so I assume you'd want to push, you'd give some relief to that deadline. The other thing is, and we'd have to, and I don't think it's that hard. I think we get one renewal, and we'd have to pay a fee for it. But we have reserved the name Kalamazoo Foundation for Excellence with the state. Currently, that hold expires at the end of August. So if it was going, if it went beyond the 31st, we'd have to petition and request to the state to hold that for another six months, which I believe you can do it. You can hold it for another six-month extension. But if you don't use it after that, then you've got to let it go, and potentially somebody else could grab it. So there is that piece that you have to think about as well.
So just a further question along those lines, and I know that time isn't the most important thing. But is it, wasn't there an agreement, is it, was it, and I'm forgetting where it's represented now, in the original Memorandum of Understanding, that imagined that we would be, had this completed by the end of August, is that correct?
True. The other thing that it does is that, once the foundation, the corporate entity is created, that permits the fundraising to begin to fund the corpus. And the idea is to have that in place for budget year 2020. Well, the longer you take to create the corporation, the less time you have to meet that 2020 budget deadline.
So something else, and I don't want to misinterpret a comment, but the sense that the board is a donor board, you know, which maybe I misunderstood, but that maybe people who were not donors wouldn't have a say? Is it, is there any requirement that the board that's imagined now, that members either may or must be donors themselves?
No. And if I led, if I gave the impression that somehow the board was going to be donor-run or donor-centric, I apologize. The idea was that the board comprised of stakeholder groups, people who, and organizations who have a stake in the way this community operates, that they were, they're incorporated in the vision that's been created, would have a say in terms of how the money is spent. And again, another level of vetting, if you will, beyond the City Commission. And remember, you're appointing those individuals. It's not as though there's this third party out there that's not responsible, at least in part, to this body. Because you're the one that ultimately approves those individuals to sit on the board. And again, there's, an idea is that their, their goal is to make sure that the way the money is spent is consistent with the statement of donor intent and consistent with the Memorandum of Understanding. I would imagine that at least for the first 10 or 12 years, that's not going to be a problem. In year 50, it might become more of a problem to make sure that everybody, we stay on the road that we have paved, if you will.
So it wouldn't be accurate to describe this board as the donor board?
No. And in fact, the large donors are precluded from sitting on the board, because if they did, that would cause the board, the foundation to be viewed as a private foundation or a private charity. And that would trigger some IRS consequences that we don't want to get in the weeds on.
So there's actually a limitation from the large donors actually sitting on the board?
That's correct.
Okay. That said, is there a way in which a donor or a non-donor would have more power relative to any recommendations, one class versus the other, that's incorporated into these documents?
No.
So I'm just going to go off in a little different direction here myself. And that is this, just, oh, what was it, three-plus years ago, here at the city, we were in the process of looking to hire a new city manager. And several has got to participate in that process. And we pulled a pool of candidates together in that process for selecting a new city manager. And it was interesting that in that hiring process, that a term came up that was used by two very experienced individuals who actually either had been or were currently city managers in the state of Michigan. And these city managers were obviously very well aware of our broken municipal finance, you know, structure, as it is built in Michigan right now. But both of those, two of those candidates used a term which may have, you know, may be accurate, but it was disturbing to use in what I consider to be a job interview. And the term that two of those experienced city managers who were applying for a job were used was they had experience in managing decline. And they felt like this was an important skill set to have when being a manager of a city, in the city of Kalamazoo. So they noted that in their interview, that they had experience and understood the art of managing decline. And I think it was, it was a phrase that stuck with me after those interviews. And certainly, in some ways, maybe that's something we had been doing for several years as we were looking to hire our new city manager. And I think that the individual who we ended up, you know, having the good fortune to select, which is our current city manager, Jim Ritzma, as a matter of fact, did not use that terminology, although he recognized that there were big challenges with the municipal funding model in the city. But has really now changed our thinking, in my mind, relative to this entire undertaking that we have going here. And in the terminology that I'm thinking, is that the city is going from managing decline to imagining the possibilities. And that's powerful. And we have sat here now for the last several months as we've been approving already allocations of initial funding, which is entirely in sync with the idea of, imagine Kalamazoo, an entirely city, citizen-driven process. No neighborhood left out by any intent. And I think that's going to continue. From managing decline to imagining the possibilities. I'm sure everybody's seen it here, but I recently read an article that was published last December in a national periodical called The Christian Science Monitor. And actually, one of our commissioners sitting on the dais here was quoted in that article. But that particular article was focused on the Promise Scholarship. And I think the title recognized the unique components of that scholarship, and the fact that how 90 cities or, you know, political jurisdictions had attempted to create one since it was created, now coming up to almost 12 years ago. And they talked in this article, which is worth reading, I think, can doing something unique, like investing in people, and particularly young people, can that be an approach, you know, as opposed to building a new stadium downtown or some other kind of investment? Can that be an approach that actually can change the trajectory of a public school system, and by consequence, a city in which it resides for the long term going forward? And the fact that it's a simple and powerful idea. And we find ourselves now 12 years later, and this is remarked on in that article, with a great list of benefits for the school system, for the city, and more so for young people who are attending college, who now have had an opportunity to take advantage of something higher education, which they may not have before. And there were, I remember, back when that was announced, actually quite a list of detractors that suggested that maybe students were not really deserving of this in the city of Kalamazoo. And that it possibly could be better placed in an area where families had higher expectations about the future for their children. And perhaps this was, you know, not the most appropriate use of resources to focus on Kalamazoo Public Schools. And it was interesting witnessing the sum of the responses that occurred relative to that very generous undertaking. And I feel similarly about this situation, that if you cook it all down, it's a pretty doggone simple idea. It doesn't take, it's an elevator speech could really describe this. Granted, you have to take that elevator speech, and you have to codify it very particularly in some documents to give it life and to give it breath. But I believe that this is the opportunity for, and a recognition of an auspicious moment for the city of Kalamazoo. Notwithstanding that there may be many other positive things that will happen, but this is another leg on that stool that we experienced almost 12 years ago now, which I think is going to continue to put Kalamazoo in a position to be recognized nationally as a place where people who live here care about here and put their money where their mouth is.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Vice Mayor.
I think this is a great idea. And we're very far down the line now. You've worked very, very hard to try to get this all worked out. And you know, the best is the enemy of the good. I think we got good here, very good. What I really am concerned about is that we do something about the people in the community who are struggling to meet their basic needs. And I think that this will help us do great things for people in the community who are struggling to meet their basic needs. At the top of the list of the aspirational projects are the, to deal with intergenerational poverty and to deal with the success of our young people. I think these are things that we need to do. And we have not had the resources to do these things. I think this is going to give us the resources to do this. So, I mean, I think there's ways you could tweak it and make it better. I would, one thing would be wonderful if we could get more representation from low-income people on that board. I still think we, with what we have here, we can accomplish the goals that we set out in this. So I'm pretty okay with where we are.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, now.
Thank you. I'm going to just hop right on the Vice Mayor's coattails. You know, my disclaimer, I know that non-residents are, there are non-residents that are very good actors, have been great stewards of the city. But, you know, if we could do any tweaking, I'd like to see some sort of prioritization or preference. Maybe it's when we're working with the community foundation and those stakeholder caucuses to somehow lift up, you know, somebody that represents healthcare that happens to be a resident of the city of Kalamazoo. So does that need to go in the articles or the bylaws? Perhaps not, but that is a concern of mine and something that I'll continue to talk about. I want to see more residents on this board as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Urban.
There we go, now it's on. Well, I'm very much excited about the prospect of approving this. So I'm going to save my, I'm going to save my... So I'm going to save my, I'm gonna save my accolades about it till the time we approve it. But right now, since we're at the beginning of a period of questioning and really examining this closely in the next two weeks, my discussion tonight is gonna be asking some of the harder questions that need to be thought through, so we don't, they don't come up, so that they're answered satisfactorily for August 7th. One of them is this Foundation for Excellence was created as an alternative to having an income tax, because there was no real viable other way to raise the kind of money we needed to have to keep the city going. And part of the thinking was, when it was first proposed, is that if this Foundation for Excellence idea did not pan out, an income tax could be reconsidered. What we need to discuss, I think, a little bit amongst ourselves and with our constituents, is what is the trigger point for considering whether this Foundation for Excellence is working or not? I'm not gonna go outside the room to answer this phone. This is, never mind. Too bad, you have to wait. I think we just need some clarity on that. So if things don't go as well as we hope, and frankly, our country is based on hope. We've gotten this far in our history by having hope. It's vital that we have that. But still, we need to be prudent about, well, what if things don't work as well as they should? We have the world economy that is certainly getting, to be a higher and higher stack of cards these days, right? What happens if we're not able to raise the amount of foundation money that is required? There. So according to what's in the articles of incorporation, the minimum distribution planned is three and a half percent per year. The minimum requirements of revenue from the foundation to maintain the status quo is ten million dollars approximately that covers the reduction in property tax, and other four million dollars that accounts for lack of revenue sharing. So that's fourteen million dollars of revenue that is gonna need to come from the foundation every year until such point as the tax base of the Kalamazoo is much greater than it is now. Fourteen million dollars a year divided by point zero three five, which is the amount of distribution that has to be made, requires that the corpus by 2020 have in it at least four hundred thousand, at least four hundred million dollars. So I just want us to think about the implications of that. Do we need to formally set a trigger point for when we would consider an income tax? Or should we at least have in the record, the fact that we discussed this, as something to come back to later if the donors should be unsuccessful in raising what amounts to almost a half a billion dollars by 2020? It's a daunting task and the fact that, but we were told that the donors expect to get help from outside the Kalamazoo area. And I think the donors have even hinted that a good deal of the money may have to come from them personally. That's a pretty bold, I wouldn't call it a commitment, but certainly an intention. And I'm grateful for that kind of encouragement we've come from them, that's coming from them about being able to reach this number. But what if we don't? So that's why I'm just raising this as something to be aware of. So that's part of the record now of what we're saying. We don't have to belabor it this evening. Another question I have that we probably ought to at least get some clarity on is, donor influence could come to the Foundation for Excellence if a donor made a large, offered a large contribution to the fund, but restricted its use in some way. Say, so I'll give you a hundred million dollars if you invest in this kind of thing. And that's called a restricted donation? Now, there's nothing in the bylaws that talk anything, say anything about that. It's probably a matter of policy for the Board of Directors to work that out. But it might be good for us to be thinking about what happens to the balance between the city commission and the citizens and a large donor who has a specific hobby horse that he wants to ride, he or she wants to ride. Maybe a wonderful thing, or a wonderful thing for some people, and a not-so-great thing for other people. So that's just another line of questioning I want to put out that we can explore. Again, we don't have to belabor it this evening. So it's kinda like, I'm very trustful. I do trust people who are leaders in our community and our authority figures and maybe have been associated with the establishment for many years. My bias is to tend to trust them. I think people, when we try to slice and dice constituencies so finely, that implies that we don't think that you're capable of doing anything except representing your narrow viewpoint. I think people who serve on boards, by and large, can absorb and take into account and advocate for views larger than their own personal narrow self-interest. I'm counting on that happening. It's happened pretty well in the history of Kalamazoo. It's happened extremely well in New York City, where two foundations have been in existence for some time that we consulted with after we first learned about this proposal. They have been able to find a modus vivendi that works very well as a public, private partnership involving wealthy people. So I'm not afraid of that. I think I want to start off with an attitude of trust and prepare to withdraw that trust if evidence presents itself. But I'm not gonna assume that the trust is not there from the beginning. I'm just not gonna do that. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Urban? I mean, Commissioner Mills, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Variety of points I want to touch on. I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Urban's comments on sort of the minimum dispersment requirement and really point out that that four hundred thousand needed by 2020 is just to reach the status quo, which I would, I guess, describe as the 2017 budget as passed, you know, earlier this year, without the additional ten million, three of which we've already allocated and seven we haven't. You know, using the minimum dispersment, which I want to stress, from my understanding, the foundation could put out more than the minimum, but just using the minimum number, six hundred eighty-five million dollars would needed to be raised to fund the ten million in aspirational projects we are currently going through. So I just wanted to point that out, just as a point to show, you know, sort of the spread between what's needed to, you know, not get back into cuts from where we were at a year ago versus sustaining the, some of the new activities. So there's definitely a lot of funds to be raised. You know, in general, I've pored over these documents quite extensively. Been up here sort of working between the last draft I had and the final draft we have here tonight. Wanted to bring up a few items for consideration, some minor, some I would consider major. I would like to sort of add to the voice on, you know, the concept of more residents on the board. And really, for me, the preference would be to have it in the bylaws or articles of incorporation, having per se nine versus seven be required. You know, this document is really setting the standard. Many of our boards have, at the city level, have a hundred percent resident requirement. I've sat on some of those myself. I don't think that's necessary for this, but I would like to see, you know, nine versus seven as a minimum. I can't imagine that would be a sticking point for anyone. But that's what I would like to throw out there. I am comfortable with the board size. I've sat on larger boards and actually amended those bylaws to bring them down to thirteen, because I think any number over thirteen is just, a lot doesn't get done and a lot of talking happens and not much action. So I am personally comfortable with that, the board number. Getting into some of the actual documents, one comment on the articles, which would be, oh, let's see, page four. This next part is going to take me a few minutes as I manage through my two drafts here. Okay, yes, this is on page four, item H. Just wanted to note that it calls no substantial part of this, part of the activities of the corporation shall be an attempt to influence legislation or the approval or defeat of ballot proposals. I want to thank Attorney Robinson for answering my question on this. You know, really, this is in line with sort of IRS rules and what's required. My personal preference would be for us to go a step further and sort of prohibit it outright. You know, we're a very activist-centered community and certainly many of our boards and organizations get solicited for supporting this and that. And I think that, and I love that work, but I think that it would be great to have this board really separate of that work as much as possible. You know, maybe no one else agrees with me on that, but I at least wanted to point out that minor issue for consideration. The next issue, I believe, is, so one item Commissioner Urban had brought up, he had mentioned there was no mention of sort of donor intent or donor restricted funds. That's actually not correct. This is cited in the bylaws on page, allow me to make sure I'm citing the correct page with the current draft. It's page eleven, section four eighteen, item B. It does cite the existence of funds restricted by donors. To me, this sort of concept is inconsistent with the no strings attached concept that we sort of have been moving on for the past year, year and a half with this. I am comfortable with the statement of donor intent that is cited. I think that I am comfortable with. But leaving open the notion of donor restricted funds in the future, I'm not. In fact, I would even, in addition to removing it from the bylaws, I would go so far as to propose it being in the Articles of Incorporation restricting them, because that is the intent on which we passed this MOU a year ago. You know, we certainly told the community over and over again, no strings attached. Within the framework of, you know, these three main principles outlined in these documents, the property tax reduction, budget stabilization, aspirational goals. Those were the original intent, and those are outlined also in the statement of donor intent. I think moving forward, we should restrict in the articles donor restricted funds. I think it could get really messy and, you know, just recognizing the enormity of sort of what we're doing here, you know, really creating a new and unheard-of model for municipal finance. I think it's vital that we restrict that ability for donors to direct funds upfront. You know, if someday in twenty years, someone says, man, I've got half a million, or, you know, I've got a hundred million for you guys, but it's gotta be this. You know, I'd like some future board to tackle that and take up that political battle of amending Articles of Incorporation. But I think upfront, you know, our intent a year ago, from my understanding, was no strings attached. I would love to see that incorporated into the articles. Oh, minor technical issue, I just wanted to point out while I have it on my mind, there's no section nine point oh six that gets skipped over in the bylaws. Just wanted to point that out in case I forget to write that down in email later. Oh, and then my final item was a question that had come up, come to mind throughout this. And it's for the Attorney Robinson. You cited the, sort of the breaking point of large donors being prohibited from being on the board, because then it could be a private foundation. I was wondering if you could speak more as to what legally triggers that? You know, is it a dollar amount? Or what is that, you know, that basically says, well, now you've donated too much to where you are prohibited from being on the board, because that would make it a private board?
So I'm gonna hold, just let you finish and let everyone finish if they have questions that have come up to try to get all of them answered, if these gentlemen have answers. So if you have other items.
I don't believe I have any other comments at this point. I would love to hear other folks' thoughts on items I've brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a couple of questions. All of the foundation meetings will be in public. I just want to make sure if you'd clarify that later. And that, being that this is such a legal, so much legal framework is here, we've, I was wondering if you would state sort of what other legal foundations or supports that you reached out to or use guidance on some of the nature of this, whether it's the Council of Michigan Foundations or what have you? Just giving a sense that though you two brilliant minds, legal minds, went about this work, but where else did you source guidance and that sort of thing? If you'd reiterate that, that would be helpful. So with that, you've heard a number of questions here, a number of statements, a lot of discussion. Love to have you dive in. I'm not gonna talk too much more. I'm gonna sort of be like Commissioner Urban and wait till the seventh or maybe during my comments later. Mr. Attorney, why don't you go first?
Certainly. I think there's, there's no section nine oh six, because I think all the even numbers were removed from section nine. So, and so, again, that's one of the, something happened in the latest draft, and we can get that changed. I don't think that's a big deal. I've asked the question, what makes, what causes it to be made a private foundation? And it, the question, the answer to the question I got is, it depends. I don't know that there is necessarily a true litmus test. It's if you are a, if you're a large donor. I can get more specific information to that. But I've asked the question a couple of times from- from those who are more versed in this area of the law and know the IRS regs better than I, and the answer I keep getting is, it depends. If, so clearly the lead donors would be prohibited. Members of their families would likely be prohibited because they would be aggregated or they would be considered as, you know, if I was one of the lead donors, my son or daughter was on the board or also gave, they would, they could be, if they were on the board, they might just cause the organization to be deemed a private foundation by the IRS. So there's, it is a fact-driven inquiry, quite frankly, but I will attempt to get a little more of, if you will, precision to you in that regard. I guess in terms of, it was purposely left open in regard to restricted gifts. I know that that has been raised as a potential issue and there's two sides to that. You could get a donor who said, "Yeah, I really am enthused about what we can do about generational poverty. I'm going to give you a $100 million gift to address generational poverty." Well, that's right within the sweet spot of what this organization is supposed to do by saying, "Here's a chunk of money devoted to that, that therefore frees up a lot of other money for other things." So do you really want to tie one's hands? The question of whether you should accept restricted gifts or not, I think is really a question for the board as to whether it's going to accept. And it can, I think it can make the, a case-by-case decision because if it is, as Commissioner Urban said, "Here's a bunch of money, but I want it for this hobby horse idea of mine because I think that's the way we ought to do it." I think the board should be free to say, "No, we're not going to take that." But if it is a, I'm going to say, an unlimited limited gift, for instance, "Here's a chunk of money I really want devoted to generational poverty," or "I really want this to address youth programming," why would the board want to say no to that? Because it is within the scope of what it is that this organization is poised and supposed to be doing. So my advice would be to leave that to the board to make on an ad hoc basis. They might even say, "We'll accept restricted gifts up to a certain amount," but let the board make that decision as a policy, which could a little more easily amend it. It kind of goes back to the concern that was raised by Commissioner Anderson in terms of, yeah, we want to build something that's going to last, but still on the other hand, we want to have some flexibility to deal with issues as they come, as they arise from time to time in terms of how this is, how can we best use these funds? I don't know that there's necessarily a problem with increasing the number of residents to probably two-thirds or nine. I think that's likely doable and I'm willing to raise the issue. I don't know that there's anything particularly magic about the 3.5. I think that is pulled from some IRS regs, but there may be, again, some wiggle room around that if you are a little more comfortable lowering that number, but, so I'll investigate that as well. I think that's, oh, and again, the issue, I don't want to go there. So, and, oh, as the mayor, that was it. These, it is in the bylaws, all the meetings are subject to Open Meetings Act, so they are open to the public and they are required to be, because again, the city of Kalamazoo, under the Home Rule City Act, is creating this organization and therefore is subject to the Open Meetings Act as required by law. And so those meetings will be open to the public. Again, if you're open to the public, there will be an opportunity for public comment. There will be opportunity for citizens to comment to the board. So, and receive that, the board will be able to receive that feedback just as you receive feedback from citizens later this evening when they give their comments. So that opportunity will be there and that's, I think, one of the beauty of going forward pursuant to the Home Rule Cities Act. It was suggested by the attorney for the lead donors, if he'd had his druthers, he really didn't want to go down that road, but he said, I think we convinced him that this is a better approach, is to use this statutory authority that's been granted, cities in Michigan, to create this type of structure. And I think it inures to our benefit because it comes with all the transparency that comes with government. I think that basically covers the ones that probably needed my response.
Mr. Manager, did you have items that you wanted to cover as well that addresses any of the questions that came?
Yeah, I do have a couple. First, I want to go back to the disc of Destiny. I don't know if everyone can remember what it looks like, but we've shown it a few times. In the center of that is Imagine Kalamazoo and kind of getting to the neighborhood question about, you know, representation or, you know, that's really where the neighborhood groups can, as well as residents, speak into the work that we're going to be doing. As far as the board goes, that's more of discerning whether the funds that are being requested are in line with the ultimate purpose of the foundation. So I would go back to, I kind of do this in my own mind, really the foundation of this is Imagine Kalamazoo and that's where we're reaching out to our residents and listening to what their aspirations are and then trying to fulfill those through this work and the work that we as a city do every day. That's important, too, that what we're trying to do is ultimately align all of our resources around these community goals and show impact of that. So to the extent that we are accountable, there's really two accountability channels there. One is accountability back to the Foundation for Excellence Board through a community scorecard, but also we have a feedback group back to our residents as well, showing that what we're doing, the resources we're investing, we're actually demonstrating impact and success. So that's, really want to speak into that. I think we also, I recently reread the Mr. Collier's letter to the city back last fall. In reading that-
From the Council of Michigan.
From the Council of Michigan Foundations. He was recommending, I believe in that letter, that the foundation be a supporting organization of the community foundation, but also left it to, at the very least, you know, use the, or enter into a contract with community foundation for backroom support. And in talking with the city attorney, and maybe he can elaborate on this, why it was determined that this, the foundation be a supporting organization of the city under the Home Rules Act is important. I know we've talked about that and maybe that could be clarified here.
Mr. Attorney.
Oh, before I answer that question, I did not answer your question, Mayor, about other sources. Clearly, the Mr. Toms who helped craft this has a great deal of experience in this. He not only sits on boards, he advises them and he's drafted similar documents for other organizations. From my own experience, I tapped into the Miller Canfield Law Firm and got some advice from them and vetted some of the ideas with their attorney, who again, has practiced in this field and got that advice. And then obviously I took a look at other models, particularly the ones in New York that was referenced, and also looked at the WMU Foundation documents. Those are, again, fairly publicly available and easily to review. And there's also another, very early on, a community in California that I took a look at, but while interesting, it was a little more bare bones. So there was other sources that were consulted and other individuals who were consulted who were well-versed in this area. Speaking to the manager's issue, at least as, again, using those sources, it was the advice I received, particularly from Miller Canfield, that using the Home Rule Cities Act approach would be advisable, given the fact for transparency and also making, it's also, is clear, if we had used another model, the statutory authority doesn't exist. The statu-, I mean, I guess you can take the point, "Well, if you're not prohibited, you can do it." Okay, but do we want to go down that, do we want to go down that road as opposed to proceed on, "Here is the specific statute of authority that gives the city the ability to do this pursuant to the Home Rule Cities Act and pursuant to the Michigan Nonprofit Act and you also have to follow the Open Meetings Act." Clearly spelled out. Why not use that authority that makes it crystal clear as opposed to saying, "Well, we think we can do it this way and so unless we're, you know, maybe better asked for forgiveness rather than permission." And that, I don't think, I wouldn't be doing my job if I advised this body to do, to take that approach.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, maybe I missed this, just very quick point, just following up on the comments by Commissioner Mazzarri, was related to the Articles of incorporation and maybe you answered this, which was Article 2H, related to no substantial part of the activities. Did you answer that particular one related to the idea of maybe no part of the activity should be?
Yeah, my advice, and I shared this with Commissioner Mazzarri, was don't touch that, leave it as is because IRS is used to seeing that language as opposed to, and then the other problem is if you make it stricter and somebody accidentally does something, now you've violated your bylaw, you violated your Articles of incorporation and then you're going to maybe, if somebody really wants to create problems, is that, you know, you really shouldn't have done that because it's, the no substantial part is, that's a pretty good test. I think the IRS knows how to interpret that, but if you're going to be more strict, you know, it's kind of like being a little bit pregnant, you know? You're either, you either are or you aren't. And if you say, "Thou shalt not," then there is no wiggle room as opposed to here, this no substantial part, okay, we know what substantial means under the IRS regs. And so why invite, if you will, scrutiny where there is probably no intent to violate this provision?
Standard language.
Yes.
Other questions, commissioners, or comments, or commissioners likes?
Yeah, this sort of round the table way of communicating has given me a whole lot of notes. So I am going to just make, you know, I've got a handful of other comments I'd like to make and then I'm going to sort of sit back and to not belabor the point further, I'll let it go to the next time we meet. So I want to start with, I do understand, I did not mean to insinuate that the donors would be sitting on the board, at least our large donors. I do understand that. I would like to have a better understanding of what you mean, City Attorney Robinson, by family members are likely not to be allowed on the board. I'd be interested in what that means exactly. I still think that, you know, so we've talked about in the bylaws, we have this statement of intent and this board is meant to be guided in some sense based on the presentation by this statement of intent. And I wonder if, and maybe this is something I'm missing, whether or not that should be replaced with, you know, the board being guided by Imagine Kalamazoo. I don't know and you guys can, you know, when we get there, correct me if I'm wrong. Or I guess answer this question for me. I don't know, you know, let's say 10 years from now, 20 years from now, when all of us are gone and somebody else is sitting up here, will this board, will this foundation still be holding to, or still, you know, have to answer to the Imagine Kalamazoo process? Because we know that when the second grader, maybe mine, makes it to be on this board, they'll still be following the statement of intent. Will they still be following, will they be required to still follow the Imagine Kalamazoo process? So that's something I'll look for an answer from, for, rather. And maybe if not, this is language that we can include. I also do want to go back to Commissioner Anderson. I think the Kalamazoo Promise is actually a really good example to use because, you know, if you all remember when we were all running for these seats, some of the questions that were asked of us, some of the things that I'm sure many of us had been in communication about prior to being elected and even now, is that the Kalamazoo Promise is great, but what it didn't do was address structural systemic inequality. It hasn't. And so we know that there is still a portion of our population, our young people, being left behind and we're still trying to find the answers for that. Frankly, within this work, we're still trying to find the answers to that. So, you know, I don't know that running a municipal government the same way is necessarily the answer. I don't believe it will address those imbalances. And I do say, I do think, and I'm going to say this, and I'm not speaking to anybody in particular, you know, this happens often in governments, this happens often, you know, in the workforce, you know, many of us, when we get into leadership positions, our tendency to see ourselves as leaders and also philanthropists with lots of money as the saviors of communities tends to be a larger part of the problem than it is the solution. You know, at the end of the day, no matter how this plays out, no matter what we do with this, the spending of these funds should be directed entirely by the citizens and not anybody else. And I do believe we can get there. I also want to agree with Commissioner Mazzarri. I mean, you know, in the beginning, when we talked about this, we said, I think it was you Vice Mayor Cooney that said, "This doesn't work unless we get the money and it's hands-off. Doesn't work otherwise." Well, then donor restricted funds aren't, you get the money and it's hands-off. It is, here are the funds, I want to go to this. Now, I do hope that those donor restricted funds go towards ending generational poverty. What if they don't? What if they don't? I mean, all throughout history, there are examples of people with huge sums of money to donate that don't necessarily care about addressing poverty. And this is open to all donors, not just the two initial donors that mentioned generational poverty. So to me, that is hands-on. Just one more point. I do not want to give the impression that I think that folks cannot represent others' interests, but what I know through my work, and I'm sure many of you have come in contact with this, I don't know if anybody's taken the implicit bias test online through Harvard, that's a thing that exists. Implicit bias is inherent to who we are. And so often, even the most well-meaning person who wants to represent a group of people might not be the best person to do that because we all have implicit bias and that might keep them from doing so. And that's why I think regardless of your, regardless of how well-meaning you are in representing constituencies that you are not a part of, you still probably may not be the right person for that. And so maybe it doesn't have to be an increase in the number of people on the board. Maybe just as the Kalamazoo Community Foundation is figuring this out, they're making sure that not only do the stakeholders represent all of these different industries, but they also represent all of these different neighborhoods. And they also represent all of these different, this different, you know, diversity of, I'm sorry, they represent a diversity of identities. Maybe that's a way to do it. Because I do think that's still incredibly important to make sure that everybody's voice is at that table. And then just one final note, I really do not believe if we vote on this on the seventh that we've done our jobs. I really don't. We said that we would roll this out. We said that the public, the citizens, would have ample amount of time to go through these documents, to, you know, pick through them, to guide our work, to help us make this decision. And I don't believe two weeks is enough. And frankly, I work a full-time job, a full-time job, two weeks was hard for me. And we got folks not living in as privileged a situation as me or any of us, who we expect to get through all these documents in two weeks and be fully informed for our meeting on the seventh. I don't believe that that's possible all the time. And I would say that even if we pushed it to the 21st, we'd still meet our deadline. So I don't see the concern in pushing it just two more weeks. And then I will shut up for the night.
Commissioner Mazzarri? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to bring up one other sort of systems issue. I apologize, I forgot to bring up in my initial comments. And again, it's an item for us to consider. Other folks just might not agree. On the Articles of incorporation, page sort of eight slash nine, item D, and this is just an item discussing the commissioner, commissioner appointees on this board, our directors on the board. Obviously, the mayor is on there automatically and then two others. I think it would be beneficial to have language in there that also sort of says that the makeup of those three commissioners is not 100% identical to the executive committee of the commission. You know, not speaking about our existing- about our existing Executive Committee, but just the existence of Executive Committees in general, you know, there's a tendency for more information to be had and shared, you know, at that sort of agenda-setting meeting. And I think it would be beneficial to diversify the Commission representation on this board, to not just be those same three who are in the Executive Committee. I, I can't imagine that the, you know, donor party would, would care about that issue at all, because it's really just a matter of us internally discussing that. So, I just wanted to bring that up, it's just an item to consider. Sort of a follow-up on that is, is just a notion, agreeing with Commissioner Sykes, of, I'm, I'm really comfortable with the 21st, in that, you know, we get a chance to spend the next weeks looking at this. Various folks have brought up different ideas, considerations. I don't expect anyone up here at this diocese to go, oh, yeah, you know, Commissioner so-and-so just said that, and I love it, let's vote on it right now. But ultimately, you know, as we're doing our due diligence with this, if there, if there is a majority of folks who wanna make minor changes, let's consider that on the seventh. And, and still meet the 31st deadline. I don't think we need to push this out, you know, beyond that, really. So, that was my other item I wanted to bring up. And I did want to, I guess, really stress my belief that the, the framework in this, in the bylaws and the articles, as far as how these funds are spent, is great. I, I really appreciate how it is laid out. And I think it is so great in regards to that intent of what these funds are for, that I just can't really fathom the need for a, an additional donor restriction. Because money, it's really hard to say no. Honestly, I'm not comfortable with a board of non-elected officials deciding, well, is that a hobby horse, or is that really this? It's a really slippery slope, because maybe it's a $80 million hobby horse that, you know, we could pigeonhole into Kalam, Imagine Kalamazoo, but it, you know, we're kinda trying to, yeah, oh, yeah, we can fit that in. I think the Imagine Kalamazoo process and existing document is amazing, and it's resident-led, and I think that should be the 100% driving force of this work. And, you know, we mentioned the, the notion of, we want people, maybe someone wants to only donate for generational poverty. Well, let's imagine that someone says, I'm only gonna donate to generational poverty. Well, right now, by our city charter, we have the authority to raise taxes without a vote of the people up to 19 points over mills. If, if too many restricted funds came in for generational poverty, which is a great thing to think of, we might actually not cover our structural deficit and fund core services. That's a reality. A reality we shouldn't even have to think about. I think we have a great framework, an amazing framework, that, that city staff and, and members up here put work into, that the, the thought of donors saying, well, my money's going to this, but my money's going to that, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with it. And I don't think it's necessary. So, I just believe it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Urban?
Thank you. Well, United Way has dealt a lot with that problem of restricted donations. A lot of people say, well, I'm not gonna gift United Way because it has a Red Cross in it. People who remember how the Red Cross treated them during World War II, for example, it's still around. And that was a concern. So, they've, they've developed a kind of a complex way of, of getting, addressing that problem. And I think probably we could, too. I'm starting to get a little bit, my thinking is starting to get a little bit muddied, because we've been at this now for over two hours. So, I only can speak now generally without, generally, and still be coherent. I would caution against trying to tie everything down too rigidly, out of some fears or that are genuine and have some basis in reality, because we all can come up with fears that can, can really restrict what happens in the future. And some very noble things could be put in that could be overly restrictive, you know, 10 or 20 or 50 years from now. The example I could think of is the Barnes Foundation. Those of you who are in, in foundation business, probably aware of this foundation in Philadelphia that was, the, the funds for that foundation were to be administered by Lincoln University. And Lincoln University insisted that, that the location of this museum could not ever move from this suburb of Philadelphia. The fact that there were hundreds and hundreds of cars coming into this neighborhood to go to this museum, day in and day out, they ruined, ruining the whole neighborhood, they could not move it, because there was a very specific restriction in the, in the trust. This comes to mind when I think about how we could, we could overspecify some things. I'm glad we're skeptical. Commissioner Sykes is expressing skepticism in one area, I'm expressing some skepticism in another area. That's all good, now's the time to have the skepticism. But let's, let's try, at the end of this thing, to create something that basically allows for us to, the organization, the foundation, to respond to the future and trust the next generation, because we'll be gone and they'll be here. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners that have not spoken, I'll come back to you, Commissioner Millsar, in case there's others. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Urban, I, I do wanna sort of add to my point that, one, I agree, it would be horrible to be overly restrictive. I, I think what we have, and what I mentioned with how great this framework is, is it references back to the Imagine Kalamazoo process, or similar processes in the future, and that it is very flexible. And that it's flexible in what our residents drive our funding to be. You know, throughout this whole past year, year and a half, that, you know, there have been many, many references towards specific, you know, foundations for arts, or different parks foundations. This is a, as far as I can see, a truly first-of-its-kind foundation for the general function of government on this scale. And, you know, we need to absolutely be fearful and skeptical, and, and, you know, not overly so, but make it so that there's as little room for abuse as possible. And not abuse in, in the, you know, negative sense of someone's coming maliciously at it, but just things people might not consider. And, and I think, and that's why I think the framework is so great, because it references back to the structural problem, the tax reduction, and what our residents want. And I think going beyond that is, is not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Commissioners, I, I concur on the 21st. I think that we, we, well, and let me say, the reason why it's simple to concur is that we set this process up, that if there were significant issues, that we'd have some flexibility within our schedule. We'll have to amend the schedule, or whatever, we have to do officially amend it, but the 21st seems reasonable to me. And so, if you're, I'm shaking, I'm seeing heads shaking, so, we, one of our outputs for this meeting was to establish the 7th as the next meeting, but I think that it sounds like we're gonna be on the 21st, so let's just plan on that and take that off the table right now. Again, there is no intent. This is just part of this work, this is cumbersome, heavy work. This guy has been stressing about this so much, and trying to move this, and trying to get the other attorney to move, which I will tell you, alas, it's sometimes, Commissioner Sykes and I talked about that this morning. But the work is really good work. Are there opportunities for some tweaks and some changes? Probably there are. Being careful that we make a document that is flexible for the future, that holds folks accountable to expectations, you know, one of my concerns had been more about commissions of the future. And somebody pushed back on me, well, they represent the people, but then, we represent the people here, and we'll on this board as well. But I, I sometimes think that that's the larger concern of what Commissioner such-and-such is gonna want to do along with some other Commissioner. In regards to, I do wanna respond to the Administrative Committee and what have you, it doesn't designate who the Commissioners are. So, again, putting something in there that doesn't allow you folks to determine who you want to set, I think that, that's something that I, I guess I wouldn't support that, let it be loose, and you folks determine, the seven of us determine, it's gonna be this person, not this person, or we determine that, well, wait a minute, you know, the Administrative Committee is all women, or all men, or all this, or all that. It gives you the flexibility to actually make that decision, so that if it does land, it, it does make sense, because it's the most diverse group of people we have. I would hate to restrict the Commission from not being able to do that, because they are on the Administrative Committee. So, that's just my statement on that. With that, we are now at Item E, or, excuse me, D, Citizens' Comments on Anything This Evening. Please step to the podium, you'll have four minutes, give us your name and whether you live within the city. Good evening, sir.
Hello, my name's Zachary Lester, I live in the city of Kalamazoo. For those at home that don't know what we're looking at, it's a 24-page document, bylaws as well as some other documents of one page, document. And so, I think I just dropped a pen in, I'm sorry. But I can't make any comment on this tonight. I haven't, I've skimmed through it. I, in no way could have, I just picked this, it was not available to me or any other citizen until you walked in the door tonight. There is in no way I could read this while paying attention to the meeting. And so, I think any comment you get tonight on this is gonna be half-thought, and I'm just commenting on the procedure itself. There needs to be more openness, there needs to be more transparency, and that was promised to us. There was conversation tonight about donor-directed donations. When we did the MOU, it was said over and over and over, there will be no strings attached. That was quoted by the media, it was said by many of you over and over. No strings attached means no strings attached. If someone wants to donate a substantial amount of money to a specific cause, there are nonprofits they can work with, they can set up their own foundation, you know, but no strings attached really means no strings attached. And we need to recognize that that was said by many of you to the media, to us, at, in this room, when you voted to do the memorandum of understanding. And yes, it might make the work more difficult, but, you know, sometimes good work isn't easy. I recognize there was the word "standard language" used in a lot of, when describing these bylaws. This is not a standard nonprofit foundation. This is a foundation that will fund a substantial part of our city's needs. And we need to recognize that this, there is nothing standard about this. And I think that that's important. I do have a couple of questions. It was stated that the foundation meetings would be open to the public, will the committee meetings be open to the public? Will the, will the amount and source of donations to the foundation be open to the public? And I'm also concerned not only about the group of eight stakeholders, because I feel like some of those are more business-centered rather than citizen-centered. You know, I recognize that hospitals and healthcare and stuff like that do help the community, but I think many of us would argue that those are businesses, even though they're structured as nonprofits legally. I, I think there needs to be more citizen involvement in this, we're, we're deciding our city's future, and not, and this is just really important. I can't make a lot of other comments, though, because I haven't been able to review this. And I think that even the 21st might be rushing it, because if you get a lot of citizen, was spoken about tonight, you gain your consent from us to govern. And if we have a lot of feedback to give you, we might have to push deadlines. And if we lose the Foundation of Excellence's name, so what? We can name it something else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, sir.
What's up, guys? Cliff, I seen you earlier, you just kinda looked at me, what's up, man? Now, I actually come to this foundation-
Sir, we need your name and whether you live within the city.
Chris Womah, 1407 Bryant Street. I do live in the city. I come at this differently. I, I'm in my 19th year of mental health, in, in Kalamazoo almost exclusively. I've had a lot of state training. I worked one-on-one with people who would lose funding at a state hospital, or have some kind of change in a situation that were two-to-ones ratio, and I would have them one-on-one in the community where they were two-on-one in a facility. You learn a lot in that kind of work, and you get a lot of training to understand relationships and understand the behavior. So, that way, when you're getting a crazy story about something, you don't get caught in the story, you look at the behavior of the individual to dictate what's going with this story. And that's where I have issue here. We're supposed to say that, that Johnson and Parfait, one of the people that had a hand in the banking crisis of '08, is a financial person, and somebody who makes a living at NPI Research, sending animals to genetic testing to see how toxic things like lipstick are, are supposed to be the people that are gonna guide our children. As somebody in a psychological background, that's called crazy. When you look at Bill Parfait, who just came out, he's not even willing to acknowledge two of his own biological children and help them. And you're going to tell me that he's gonna care about any of the kids in my neighborhood that are getting their asses kicked daily? That's insulting. This isn't about helping the community. If this was helping the community, they would, Zoetis and Parfait wouldn't have needed a $90 billion tax break 10 years ago, and they wouldn't have needed the extension. These guys changed the rules for taxes for themselves, so that they can pay less. I bet this whole process, when we get down to the nuts and bolts that we can't see, is gonna turn out that this was more lucrative for them than paying taxes like the rest of us, which is the real reason that this is happening. I truly believe that, which is why I filed for mayor, for mayor this morning. Some of you know that, too. Anybody? I need to get 50 signatures by tomorrow. I don't, I really wasn't interested in doing that. I'm worried about this community. And as I'm getting older, and doing things like walking with a cane and having breathing problems, I'm looking at what happens after I'm left. And this has kept me up at night enough times, to where I feel like this is better than worrying about my health. I'm more concerned about doing this than I am for living. I'm more concerned about doing this right now than I am for the duck program y'all took me to jail for, and in charge of me, pre-trial for tomorrow. Everybody I know in the city that's a resident, has a problem with the ordinances, has a problem with the law enforcement, and has a problem with not being heard. A decade of that. And you're gonna tell us now it's magically going to turn around, because somebody who funds Rick Schneider, our governor, has it in his heart to help the community? If y'all wanna help, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Hello. Yes, my name is Andrew Argo, from 1106 South Park Street. Just wanna start by saying, I actually, we, I commissioned a letter with me and several other community leaders and activists. Some of it is pertinent, some of it, I honestly might wanna go home and rewrite this after everything I've heard here tonight. There's been a lot of specific information laid down about how the foundation is going to function, that I was not aware of. Just echo some of the sentiments of some of the people who spoke earlier. Yet, I would really like some time for us to look at these documents. Again, there weren't even enough copies for myself to actually get them personally. So, what Mr. Wemoff just mentioned about, you know, Parfait. Generally, you know, what I find is, you know, we talk about trust. And I have an inherent distrust, or skepticism- And I have an inherent distrust or skepticism. When you have these very small pool of large money donors coming with this kind of money to our city to, you know, essentially set these goals. And I think for the most part, the Imagine Kalamazoo program has sculpted around that concern very well. But there's two fundamental things that I think really need to be spoken towards, and that is transparency. You know, like we're seeing, like one of the main donors is, is part of a political action committee for somebody who basically had the most disastrous privatization project in American history. And that does matter. Now, should we abandon the foundation entirely? I'm a realist. I understand this is going through. But we need to make sure that we vigorously address transparency and democratic control. I think a lot of that has been worked into the DNA of Imagine Kalamazoo. But, you know, actions speak louder than words. And I think what we really need here, we need concrete and legally binding language within both the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws that make it very clear that, you know, what, this is our city budget. It is not some sort of stipulation or, you know, backdoor agreement that some sort of program or, you know, through line of theirs should be followed. And right now, what I've been hearing is a lot of, you know, kind of doing it by this sort of honor system, where we're just going to say that, like, they have these intentions for the community that are positive. But as I said, you know, I would even suggest maybe the formation of some sort of small citizen commission to figure out what are, what are the levels of transparency and control we are going to need? There are so many situations down the road that really have not been addressed. I mean, you know, how do we prevent people from getting on these boards or people elected to the commission who maybe are getting money from people who donate or intend to donate? Again, there's a lot more time needed and I really think citizens of Kalamazoo deserve that time to parcel this out.
Thank you, sir. You can give it to the clerk. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
My name is Nora Getz. I'm resident of 323 Douglas Avenue, 49007. I would like to echo a lot of the concerns that Mr. Wendoff, Mr. Wamoff and Mr. Argo just mentioned. I think there's a huge amount of issues with transparency and accountability. Of course, you know, a foundation like this could be used for good, but there's a lot, there's a lot about this that really stinks. I think it does, it really does matter that the main donors, Bill Far, one of the main donors, Bill Parfait, was in charge of Rick Schneider's PAC as well as a former leader of MPI Research, at least until allegations of sexual assaults. He's still on the Board of Monsanto and I'm forgetting the fourth thing. But with these in mind, it seems very unlikely that his, if he has as much control over the foundation as he does, he won't really, he might be more inclined to act in his own personal, political or financial interests. And that's something we simply cannot have. I absolutely agree with having a citizen board that's, that we can trust, that we can keep accountable and visible. And I think a lot of the commissioners have asked a lot of the right questions. I think that this, what the city does also need is more funding to public schools, transportation, infrastructure and renewables, including green energy and recycling. But I will say, I did hear about the city's new recycling program it's been implementing and I do appreciate that. I would hope to see some places to throw recycling and walking down our city streets. I've, there's been many times I've carried a soda bottle or water bottle and wanted to not throw it in the trash when just walking through the city. So that's something to at least consider. And yeah, that's my comments.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, please. Good evening, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Tammy Hibner. I live at 1314 East Alcott, Kalamazoo. I want to, first of all, thank all of the commissioners that are working so hard. And Commissioner Sykes and Commissioner Will. Thank you so much for pushing for and encouraging the commission to give us more time. Because if it wasn't for some Facebook posts, I wouldn't, I would not have known about this tonight. I left work and I came here and I'm, I'm hoping that maybe we can have before the 21st, maybe some community education meetings. Because I'm just a simple woman. I work for a living. I pay my taxes, which I just did, and it was painful. And I have a lot of skepticism about this. I, I also see that it's a wonderful opportunity and it's a lot of money and it could do a lot of good. But as my fellow citizens have stated, there's questions about this man's character. And those kind of questions kind of bring into question as to how he's actually going to expect his money to benefit him. You know, he's putting it out there, but he's expecting a benefit. And I'm not deceived about that. He's not doing it out of the goodness and the kindness of his heart. Many don't. I really want to believe that our commission, and I do believe that most of you do, want the best for all of its citizenry. I see it in your faces. I see it in your work. And, you know, I also see though that, you know, a city that's been in bankruptcy or close to it and had so many problems, still wasting money and wanting to build a new police station in an area where you've got to buy houses for $60,000 when there's ample opportunities at the other end of the street, that officers have suggested that are rentals and they're not family-owned. And there's just kind of seeing the city waste money in different ways, displacing families and family-owned homes instead of going for the empty lots that the city already owns. And, you know, the rentals that would, you know, those people are, have an easier time moving than people that are established in a home for long periods of time and plan on retiring there or whatever. But I do appreciate and would ask for as much time as possible and as many opportunities as possible to get more information on this. Like I said, if it wasn't for a few Facebook posts today, which I don't have Wi-Fi at home right now, if I hadn't been at work and had a half an hour to turn on my phone and check my Facebook page, I wouldn't have known about this. So you guys, you're not doing your job. Nobody's doing their job as far as informing the citizenry. To have this available today at 3 o'clock? Are you kidding me? You know, if you have a job where you have to present a report for a board and you only get it to them a few hours-
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Next, please. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name's Kevin Coltes. I live at Wall Street here in Kalamazoo. First time I've done this, so I don't know. Do I get to ask questions? Or, okay. Does that, do my questions, is that the amount of time or is the answers part of the time too?
We don't respond back. We'll take it up during the citizen or commission-
Well, I'm guessing from some of the comments that are made before, maybe some of these have already been answered. Because this is so rough, it says rough draft at the top. I'm guessing the public hasn't seen the final copy. Is there, well, I guess you can ask a question. I want to know if there is going to be a final copy before you all discuss it in your meeting, preferably on a website. Because I didn't have time to read all this, let alone understand it. An example would be on page, let's see, page two. It has a, let's see, it'd be B3. It has a BII. Is that B2 is my question? Because there's other pages where they have the article, Roman numerals, and then the capitalized letter and then the number as opposed to this nomenclature. The reason why that's important is if they're not perfectly uniform in how you do that, you could have misunderstandings and legally that could make a big difference if you don't have it exactly right. I don't know what an affinity organization is. On page 12, which should be section, I mean, Article 11, it says, "In the event that the corporation is determined to be a private foundation." I don't understand how there's different events and I don't know what, why it's in quotes, "private foundation" and what that represents. Just as an example of things that I haven't had time to read and don't understand. A couple of comments were made about Sykes and, I'm not sure I pronounced her name, Milk Cart, Car wreck or something like that. You made comments about percentages of people from the city being on there. Like Sykes particularly mentioned it. I didn't know if that was considered stakeholder directors, which is page seven. It's, I think, the eight things that are listed because it correlates to eight. Were you suggesting potentially being under neighborhood stakeholders as having that be the different neighborhoods? And you mentioned a percentage and maybe upping the percentage. I don't know where it's listed in here, where it talks about percentages. Maybe I missed it because I only get, you know, seriously through like maybe half of this. So if that exists in this document, I'd be curious to find out where that is because it seems important to know about city representation. And again, I guess I'd just like to second some of the comments about having more time to look at this. Because as was pointed out by multiple people, this is incredibly serious. So you're talking about recreating how the city's done, is what my impression. I mean, you're talking about, you know, foundational sort of things. Seems like the city should have comments about it. It shouldn't be rushed. I mean, if you're going to do, if you're going to make a foundation to a building, you want to make sure it's not made out of sand or gravel that's going to crumble down. Although not getting too detailed is important, you got to have a good structural foundation. Some people make, make things like 24 pages is not that serious of a document. But to get something really good, it's pithy and concise and it's well thought of. You like go over every little point over and over and over again. So I second spending more time on this and definitely having more time for the public to look at it. That certainly makes a lot of sense. I think there's been a lot of good comments you all have made, which is very reassuring and impressive. That being said-
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Hopwell and commissioners. My name is Dorothy Appleyard and I'm a very new resident of the city of Kalamazoo. I'm here this evening because I'm very interested in strategic and comprehensive planning. And I understand the city's just completed their Imagine Kalamazoo. And I'm sorry that I missed the opportunity to participate in that because I think, I think it is the vehicle for community participation in decision-making of this sort. And I think what I'm hearing from people in the audience is that they don't feel assured by, by the link to the Imagine Kalamazoo of this thing. This is a magnificent opportunity. And I think it would, I know I would like to be more educated on the topic. I hear some concerns that I think are very reasonable and well thought out. And I for one would like a lot more information and that's what I'm hearing from the people in the audience too. So I don't know how you, how you can manage that at this late date because I, you certainly, it's an opportunity that it would be sad to lose it. And so I would just like to know how I can get more information and maybe that information can be gotten to me in some way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wanting to address the commission this evening? Seeing no one, we are at commissioners' comments. Commissioner Mazzar.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight. Certainly longer than our average work session, but this is major, major work for the city that will impact us for decades and decades to come. So I appreciate everyone up here at the dais and city staff and everyone who came out. Really want to thank city staff and commission leadership for all of their hard work on this. You know, there are a lot of players involved and a lot of aspects. And I know this has been a major undertaking in addition to the general work we do or you, you folks do every day. Want to address a few citizen comments. Ken, the city attorney did mention that although this says draft, it is the sort of final version unless we were to, you know, explore other changes on the 7th. Also, the location of the majority of all director, the, you know, majority being residents is on page eight of the Articles of Incorporations, item C. And it states, "A majority of all directors shall be residents of the city of Kalamazoo." I did want to note one item. Mr. Argo mentioned privatization. I would put out there that I believe Indiana's former governor Mitch Daniels is actually the overseer of the worst privatization of government, not our current governor. So I did want to note that. And on the foundation in general, and I don't mean to say that anyone isn't taking this seriously by any means, but it's, it's just so important that, you know, not just us up here, but everyone in the community really understands how major and significant this is and, and really what's at stake. And for me, this is why I'm so cautious and, you know, taking such a critical eye on this. Is if we don't, if these funds are not raised at some point, whether it be in three years or six or eight, you know, if we don't raise at least $400 million, we will be facing either higher taxes again or cuts. If we don't raise much more than that at some point, we will be facing the elimination of the new things we are doing. So that means we really need to raise this money, which is fine. That's what, that's what this is about. But the reason I bring that up is about who's in the driver's seat. And, and that's why I think it's vital that it's known upfront the limitations on what this money can be spent and that the real drivers are not just the commission, but the citizens with Imagine Kalamazoo or similar processes in the future. Because when you need money, and we need this money, I mean, that's, that is a fact of where we are at today. We need this money. It gets very dicey to be in that position. So we, we have to be so clear upfront the parameters of what it can and cannot be used for. And that's what I'm up here and, and all of us are up here to make sure we're doing. So with that, I want to thank everyone for this, this nice work session and thank you all for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioner. Commissioner, Commissioner Urban.
Thank you, Mayor Hopwell. I do thank the people from the audience who came up to speak. It was pretty clear by the time all of you were done that it would be very wise for us to take an extra, at least two more weeks to have a more thorough airing of what's in these documents. The intention was, we were really trying to put the pedal to the metal to get to this point. And a lot of the time that we had thought we would have for, to keep the overall goal of having this foundation ready to go, begin of next year, if it were to go at all, was taken up with being very detailed about the wording of these, these documents. Those of us who aren't lawyers probably don't appreciate how important it is to have the wording right. But I've come to appreciate how important that can be, even though, yeah. So I'm glad that we're going to take a couple of extra weeks. I think it's, given how important this is, that certainly well with, certainly seems like a wise thing to do. The other thing I'd like to mention is some of the suggestions that I had made to- The other thing I'd like to mention is some of the suggestions that I had made to Attorney Robinson in connection with the Articles of Incorporation caused him to remind me that if we are unduly restrictive in what we want as city commissioners, it's possible that it will make it difficult for the donors, the, 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 the major donors to convince others to donate to the fund. So there's a balance here that goes on between, we want, we need the money and we want to have all the power too. If we have all the power, we may not be able to have all the money. So that, once again, being kind of crude about it, this is a work of compromise and of balancing. I hope that as we go through these next four weeks, that we recognize that we're going to have to balance a competing interest to arrive at a general overall good is the best that we can make with the skills that we have in our community. So I'm looking forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Mazzar.
Thank you. Just real quick, you know, as leaders over the last 18 to 12 months, collectively, we've challenged this community to think bigger and bolder. First it was Imagine Kalamazoo, and now it's the Foundation for Excellence. So I too, like my colleagues, I'm excited about the opportunity. I want us to do it right. So I'm grateful that we're going to take another month to do our due diligence. Thank you, City Attorney Robinson, for considering the two-thirds majority or nine resident seats. I look forward to hearing your report back to us. And again, thank you everybody for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sykes?
Yeah, just to answer a question that was asked of me earlier. When I, when I mentioned neighborhood representatives, I was talking about within the neighborhood stakeholder group. However, I'm open to, you know, that working out in any way, right? Whether those neighborhood representatives are in any stakeholder group. So just that point of clarification. I'm really glad that we're all in agreement about pushing this back. It looked like it was, you know, unanimous that we, we understand the need to give more time to the citizens to look at these documents. So I appreciate that. I appreciate all the comments tonight. I think it's really important feedback for us as we move forward in this process. I hope with the extra time, we have, you know, the opportunity to make some of the necessary changes to these documents to fall in line with our intention as well as the donors' intention. And most important to me is making sure that, you know, this, this body is truly representative of the citizens. And also removing, you know, staying true to, to what we said before, which was no strings attached and removing the opportunity for donor restricted funds. I would really hope that removing that opportunity would not remove the money because we were told all in the beginning that this money was no strings attached. We had, you know, every option to do what we wanted with it based on what was best for the city of Kalamazoo in line with Imagine Kalamazoo. So I really hope that wouldn't be enough to make donors walk away. I think that would not be in line with what we said this was going to be to begin with. And then I just want to, I want to just further reiterate the importance of us getting this right. You know, I think of, you know, because I am a political organizer, I think of Citizens United. And I think about what it's done to our electoral process. And I think, you know, infusing huge amounts of money into, into the electoral process has not been wonderful. Now for the city, privatizing huge amounts or huge portions of our budget could be incredibly problematic if we don't do this well. And so, you know, we need to do this well. We need to take into consideration some of the things that need to be changed to make sure this honors what we said originally, no strings attached, and go from there.
Vice Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really thank everybody for coming out tonight and staying so long. I really appreciate the three points that I think were the most important. People need to have time to read this, to learn about it, and to see what it's all about. And I think Commissioner Sykes' suggestion and the mayor accepting that, that we put this off to the 21st is great. I appreciate the concerns about transparency and democracy. And I don't think we're too far away from that right now. I think we certainly can get there. I think this is a wonderful gift to the city and I thank the donors for stepping up to do this for us. I think the promise was a wonderful gift to the city. The promise did not solve our educational problems, but it was a wonderful step forward. I think the Foundation for Excellence can supplement what the promise did to help our young people get much closer to where they need to be. But I don't think that's the answer to all the problems we face in the city. Martin Luther King said one time, "All we ask of you, America, is that you live up to what you said on paper." What we said on paper was that all people are created equal and that all people have a right to life and liberty and a pursuit of happiness. We can't do that at this table. That's a federal government has to do that. So we have to work on two levels. We have to work to change things at our national level so that our government lives up to what we said on paper. But here we are in this city, in the middle of where we are, and we have to do the best we can. And I think this Foundation for Excellence is one way that we can help our people in a way we couldn't help them before, and I'm all for it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The city manager and city attorney will tell you that I was pretty, and I could think Commissioner Sykes and I talked about it, pretty frustrated with the timing of the documents not being done as we indicated last Thursday. And, you know, I know that truly a lot of that was trying to make sure and trying to get at every piece and every item. But if I had had my druthers, I would have released what we had on Thursday and made whatever corrections or whatever adjustments we needed tonight. I'm happy that we're going to 21st. Never, never had a problem with that, knowing that we had worked it in, baked it in in case we needed that time. I'm happy that people have questions and want to go dive deeper. This is a good thing, absolutely a good thing. I do want to remind us that we do have, no matter whom sits on the board or how many or this, that, or other thing, there will always be individuals that won't agree with something that has occurred. That will think that people didn't have this in mind or that in mind. We've heard it in our meetings that when there was a rumor that we'd spent all this money or we had all, everything laid out, well, what about me? What about mine? What about this? And then the next time we saw someone else. So that, that is always interesting. We will continue to work at this. We will continue to dive deeper. This is going to be an ongoing journey though, kind of like what Commissioner Urban had to say about this work and how we move forward. There, there does have to be skepticism and cynicism. There still has to be trust. There still has to be diving in deeper, all of those things. It's all good. Everything that's occurred tonight is good and reasonable conversation. I will remind people, all of us, that many great things that we have in this community have come through philanthropy. Some of those things we enjoy, some of the things that some of our organizations that we work for benefited from, such as a community foundation. And individuals that had a means to make those things happen may be supporting your organization. Whether it's a civic theater, whether it's what we're going to hopefully do in Bronson Park to improve it, whether it's a Council Institute of Arts, and many, many, many other things. And some of those individuals, we don't know everything there is about every person that's donated even to the Foundation for Excellence so far with the $15,000. I don't know who the individuals are and what they do and the work that they do and certainly how they earn their money. I don't know. And that's part of, part of the process, I guess. I don't know. But I have a belief that we've come up with a structure and a means to do our best to protect everything we believe in with these documents. That we are doing this work that supports our community's vision as it stands through IK20, or excuse me, Imagine Kalamazoo 25. Almost broke my own rule of not using acronyms. And knowing that that vision, I think as it's written in the documents, whether it's Imagine Kalamazoo 25, the point is it's our visioning and process that may come in the future. We're going to get beyond 2025 in this community. But it's always, and it's written in there heavily, based in that work. And that vision may change down the road. When we're all gone 20 years from now, when the community has their visioning session, because we've been able to decrease infant mortality or improve housing or provide more infrastructure in neighborhoods or deal with youth in our, in our neighborhoods, then there's going to be other priorities and other needs and other thinking about how you move forward. And this opportunity will be there to support that work. It is also, it hasn't been lost in me that some of the foundation's work is, what I'll say, routine as in how we're going to invest money, how that money's going to flow into the foundation. And there's pieces of that work that will be in analysis of whether we are living up to what we said our vision is. And being able to vet that with people that are in charge of moving our operations as we do every single year with 140-plus million dollars. His staff has to come to you who prioritizes the work to determine how we move forward every single year. You do this same work every single year. Now, if you look at the pie of revenue that we have, we just, and I won't suggest we have another slice of opportunity that we get to vet. This is exciting times. This, this is, who would have thought we'd have been having this conversation about how we move our community forward in this way compared to the interesting conversations we've had in a couple of budgets where we're trying to trim and trying to cut and trying to figure out how the next day's going to come. What a great journey we're on. More work to do on the 7th. We will have this on the agenda as an item so we can dive deeper into the conversations and allow more comments, more direct comments on this. And then on the 24th, 21st, we'll have, 21st of August, I should say, August, we'll dive deeper. So with that, get to work. We've got more to do and we are adjourned.